Counselor Dugger?
Yes, I'm here.
I'm sorry, apparently my microphone was not on. Counselor Dugger?
I am here.
Thank you. Counselor Hartmeier-Prigg?
Excuse.
Oh, that's right. She's in on her trip, sorry. Counselor Hassan?
Here.
Counselor Kimmy?
Here.
Counselor Teeter?
Here.
Counselor Tivnan?
Here.
Mayor Beatty?
Here.
Thank you.
All right, we're gonna start tonight's meeting with public here, or, uh, public comment. As a reminder, public comment is a time for your city council to listen to you. Um, in order to help us be compliant with Oregon's meeting laws, this is not a time for dialogue. And so if there's follow-up needed, the city attorney, or the city manager, or, um, one of us will follow up with you. But it does look like we only have one person for public comment tonight. Lauren Garrett, when you're ready to go, you got three minutes to address the council. And also, just so, if you're here for the public hearing, we'll hear you during the public hearing, not during the visitor comment.
Good evening, members of the council. I'm Lauren Garrett. I'm the deputy director of the Beaverton Education Foundation, and I'm here tonight to say thank you to each and every one of you for making a personal donation to the Feed My Body/Feed My Brain campaign that we are coordinating in conjunction with the Beaverton School District to make sure that the forty-four percent, and that's a really important number, forty-four percent of the thirty-eight thousand students in the Beaverton School District who rely on school for two meals a day will be able to receive support over winter break when they miss those meals. And we appreciate tremendously the personal recognition and support that you made as a council, and the message that that sends to our community about how important this is, that we all pay attention and participate in supporting our students and their families. So, thank you, and we're very excited to have you onboard, and we are working with other partners throughout the community to make sure that the message continues to be heard. So, that's it, I just wanted to thank you.
Well, I appreciate the thanks, and also a little bit of kudos to your tenacity since you tracked me down through my staff while I was on vacation to remind me to donate. So, uh, thank you for that, and thank you for the work you're doing on behalf of the students of Beaverton.
You're welcome, thank you all.
All right, next, we kinda have a little bit of a proclamation slash photo time. It's a little unique, um, but Beaverton is one of the most innovative cities in the entrepreneurial region. Our business owners are pioneering and making our economy vibrant. Sometimes, when we are so focused on government work, we lose sight of the significant risk in entrepreneurial ventu, uh, ventures. Despite the best efforts of business owner, there's no guarantee that they will be successful. That is why supporting entrepreneurs in our community is so critical. I'm proud of our economic developments team work, creating fertile grounds for businesses. The city has partnered with the National League of Cities, Impact Beaverton, and the Kaufman Foundation to deliver the Kaufman Fast Track Program. This program provides startups with support and small investments to help them get their ideas off the ground. Their success provides that investing in passionate and talented people can pay off multiple times over. Today, we're here to recognize sixteen businesses and six pitch competition winners from the Fast Track Early Entrepreneur Development Program. Participants completed a rigorous ten-week course on early entrepreneurship at the Chamber, offered in English and in Spanish, and they, and thanks to new multilingual technology, we were able to do that. Classes and pitch competitions were facilitated by Christian with Impact Beaverton and Beaverton Jose Rico, um, from our own Economic Development Division. The participants being recognized today were selected as winners of the pitch competition, receiving prize money to reinvest in their businesses. And that was provided by the National League of Cities and the Kaufman Foundation through a cities' innovative partnership. I'm grateful to work our economic development team and partners who made this program possible, and I'm inspired by our local entrepreneurs who are continuing to create Beaverton's vibrant economy. And before I say who the winners are, I just wanna take this moment to thank Mike Williams, who traveled with Nathan from my team back to National League of Cities to present this idea. Um, he's always game when I call him and say, "Hey, I got an idea, do you think you could go do this for us?" Um, and he's done really awesome work in partnership with National League of Cities, as well as the U.S. Conference of Mayors on behalf of the city, going out and getting funds. He created a really great, um, uh, babysitting program, childcare center, and so every time that we ask, he delivers. So, I know Mike Williams, you don't get a lot of public, uh, credit. I do a lot of behind-the-scenes elbowing and saying, "This guy created our restaurant strategy and some other cool things." So, this is just another example of the partnership between the mayor's office and the city staff to make things awesome. Tonight's winners, and I do have this really great proclamation for you tonight. We'll take a photo with the council with you guys after this. Uh, but Josh, Alex, Darcy, Carrie, Caitlin, Yasmin, and, uh, the two other Fast Track participants that are with us today are Mark and Karen. So, if you guys wanna come up for a photo, we'd love to take one with you. All right. The best part of council meetings is when we get to take photos and, and tell people they're awesome. So, hopefully, we can keep on with that momentum. And the city council has a goal of getting done quickly today, so we're just gonna work right along to make that happen. Uh, council president, consent agenda, please.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Counselor Dugger. Any conversation, uh, on the agenda tonight, around the consent? All right, seeing none, will the recorder call the roll?
Mayor Beatty?
Yes.
Counselor Tivnan?
Yes.
Counselor Teeter?
Yes.
Counselor Kimmy?
Yes.
Counselor Hassan?
Yes.
Hartmeier-Prigg is absent, and Counselor Dugger?
Yes.
Six, yes, one, zero, no, and one absent.
Awesome, thank you. Okay, we're on to our first presentation tonight, Agenda Bill 24153. We'll let you guys get set up. And as they're getting set up, I just wanna, uh, open with a, a bit of a comment in history because what we're about to see is a, um, presentation from the very first, uh, Mayor's Innovation Fellow that we created this year. Um, and one of the reasons I created the fellowship position in the mayor's office was to work on city council priorities that there wasn't a lot of staff bandwidth to do. Traffic calming is one of the things we've been talking about for a long time. Um, although, I think, almost six years now, we've been talking about the issues in the traffic calming program. And when John, before you were on council and you were, uh, leading the downtown Beaverton NAC, we talked a lot about the counts, how we are making it happen. Um, but when we rack and stack our priorities, putting staff times towards this endeavor just never really seemed to reach the top of the list. So, we went out and got some outstanding talent from a recently graduated, um, fellow that has been working, this is what she studied, she came to my office, she did amazing things. I'd also like to give some kudos to Dan, our Assistant City Manager, um, because as the, what often happens is the mayor calls and says, "I have an idea," and they have to adjust quickly. Part of what you're gonna see tonight is a partnership between the mayor's office and staff. And Dan was the one that suggested it. He said, "Let's get our assistant traffic engineer in, let's make it happen." And I would say, I have seen this presentation for a couple of times now. I don't wanna, um, you know, cut to the chase, but it's pretty good. And so I, I'm looking forward to more of this in the future. So, with that, I'm gonna hand it over to you guys.
Well, good evening, council and mayor. We're excited to be here to present the work that's come of this, this partnership that you just all heard about. Um, so, I'm here with Afrozah Hussein Misty, my, Cara Hall, Assistant City Transportation Engineer, and she's gonna be sharing with you the findings of the research and the analysis that she's been working on, uh, this, over the past couple of months. So, her fellowship is quickly coming to an end, and for that, we're deeply sad because she has been able to make a lot of progress on this. Um, so just a little bit of kind of what's next, following all the great things you're gonna hear tonight. Uh, transportation engineering will be stepping in to take the lead on updating the traffic calming program based on the findings of kind of challenges within our program and some of, uh, the research on how other cities are addressing traffic calming. So, this will include aligning our traffic calming program with some of the other, uh, transportation policies, so things like our Complete Streets policy and the ongoing transportation system plan. Um, I will be back in front of you all in March for a work session to kind of share what this looks like in the form of a program, um, and to officially start that adoption process. And following all this work that's been done, our goal is to have an updated program in place by July 1st so that as we have funding available for traffic calming in the next fiscal year, we are ready to go with the new program. So, with that, I will hand it over to Afrozah Hussein.
Hello, everyone, good evening. I am Afrozah Hussein Misty, working as a Mayor Policy Innovation Fellow, focusing on traffic calming program for city of Beaverton. Um, thank you all for having me and giving me opportunity to share my findings. I'm really excited, and, um, let's start my presentation, next. So, uh, there are four key points I will be covering today, and these are listed in my agenda, next. Just a brief description about traffic calming. So, traffic calming is a set of design strategies and measures for reducing vehicle speed and volume to improve the safety of neighborhoods. The common measures you can see from my slide, and those are speed bump, cushion, central median, roundabout, and more, next. So, um, city of Beaverton has initiated a program called Neighborhood Traffic Calming Program in nineteen ninety-eight, eight, uh, to address those issues. And, uh, it has been, uh, through three revision, and by this time, the latest update in two thousand twenty-one did not change the entire program, um, but focus on two key impro, improvement. First one is lowering down, uh, the required survey response rate from sixty-seven percent to fifty-one percent, and extending the data collection period for traffic studies from three days to a whole week. In, in my project, I, um, was reviewing the whole program, assessing the challenge, and exploring opportunities for improvement, next. So, uh, this program has three phases. Phase, uh, one begins with, it receiving an, an application from a, um, community member. Uh, um, phase one only include finding a project to educate community member about this program and potential traffic calming measures. Phase two includes data collection for checking its eligibility, and, um, a petition survey, and prioritization for funding. After receiving the required community support and higher ranking, in from phase two, the, a project moves towards phase three. Phase three includes project design, testing, implementation, and evaluation. Another support survey is conducted in this phase, and both require at least fifty-one percent response rate for, from the study area with one representative if, um, from each tax lot or rental unit participating. Abstination are not included, uh, in the count. So, if someone does not respond to the survey, uh, their silence automatically considered as no for this project. In terms of timeline, this phase one is quite quicker, like takes only one to two months to complete, but phase two and three both takes nine to twelve months each. So, on an average, a project typically takes one point five to two years to be finished, next. Um, now I will share, uh, traffic calming project and assess its effectiveness in, at, increasing, like, um, in increasing the safety of the neighborhood, next. This example is from one fifty-fifth street. It, you can see, um, the study area from my map, and the installed traffic calming measures are speed cushions. While project typically take, um, one point five to two years to complete, but this one, uh, took almost three years to complete. It and COVID-nineteen contributed to thus, uh, this delay, and now I will, uh, share how effective those are. Although, uh, the posted speed limit remain the same, um, traffic volume, average speed, and eighty-fifty percentile speed have decreased significantly. For example, the average speed dropped down almost four mile per hour. I also reviewed other projects, uh, in this program, and all of them, um, for all of them, vehicle speed decreased, even though the devices are used are different from that. So, we can, uh, conclude that, though it is taking a long time to complete, it, um, once implemented, they are really effective, reducing the traffic speed and increasing safety to the neighborhoods, next. This is the summary of traffic calming projects from twenty twenty-one to June twenty twenty-four. From this chart, uh, you can, we can see that only four projects were completed during this step period. Unfortunately, five out of seventeen eligible project, which is thirty percent, and they did not pass through, uh, move towards the next round because they did not pass the support surveys. Just to be noted, additional sixty-nine projects were received during this time, and, and they did not move forward from the beginning because they did not meet the eligibility criteria of this program, next. I conducted interviews with the city staffs from Public Works Department, Transportation Department, and Traffic Commission to learn more about this program. And based on these, uh, interviews, I have found three key challenges in the existing program, next. The first challenge is in the community engagement and outreach of this, for this program. As I said before, two survey are needed to complete during this pro, during the process, and both require fifty-one percent support from the community, which makes a project challenging to complete because engaging the community is challenging, especially in areas with apartment complex. As we know, uh, most of the apartment complexes are typically has multi, is multicultural, and, um, the resident think they are temporary in that area, so they are less interested to reply back to the survey. And it also happens to the inactive group as well, which leads to low participation in the community members and survey response rate. Sometimes, not all the residents agree to the proposed solution, so, um, it als, it is also making it difficult to achieve consensus. And lastly, there is limitation of resources out provided by city, next. From the interview, I have found that the city staff had to send out those survey cards multiple times to the, uh, uh, to get residents to respond. Like I mentioned in my last slide, it is really challenging to engage age a multicultural apartment complex, ex-residents. All those repeated round of surveys, waiting for responses, and resending to meet the required percentage end up taking a lot of time, um, to complete a project. The current end process is reactive, mean, the city can only start working on a project after receiving a request from a resident. Also, this project lacks of data-driven approach, so the city cannot proactively assess streets and implement measures on its own, next. The third and last challenge is in licensing, collaboration, and coordination. It's really hard to engage age, um, schools, fires, and sometimes police department in the planning process. And lastly, there is a lack of information sharing and collaborate coordination between, in departments of city of Beaverton for this program, next. To summarize the interview, I learned that these multiple meetings with the community members are effective in gathering the feedbacks from the community. And based on the project data, we can see that when a project is implemented, it is successful in reducing traffic speed and enhancing the safety to the neighborhoods. So, what needs to improve? First, the process of getting a project into the program needs to be reviewed. Secondly, it currently, it takes almost a year to complete each survey, so the engagement method should be reassessed. And third, there are limitation in executing traffic calming measures, next. I explored best practices to ov, to overcome this limitation and found several cities that tackle these issues differently. Now, I will share my findings on that, next. There are three ways a project can enter a program. First one is when a council citizen submit a request, which followed by city of Vancouver, Washington, city of Salem, Oregon, and us. Another way is when a city staff identify an issue and start planning traffic calming measures in that neighborhood. City of Eugene, Oregon, and city of Demo and Iowa follow this approach, including the first one. And the third method is data-driven approach used by, uh, city of Salem, Massachusetts, which is, they created a data dashboard out that ranked all their street based on factors like speed, volume, um, crash history, demographic, land use, and more. And each year, they use those, uh, this ranking to select the top five to ten street and begin planning traffic calming measures on those streets. This approach helps identify areas where traffic calming are mostly needed. It also highlight neighborhoods with the marginalized population on whom may have unaware of traffic calming program, even if they are facing speeding issues. With the data dashboard, we can pinpoint those areas and work towards creating a equitable community, next. The, this slide focuses on assessing community support. Currently, we rely solely on survey responses percentage to move forward a project. As we saw earlier, that in the pie chart, thirty percent of eligible project did not progress because they failed to pass the support survey, though they have speeding issues. Um, however, city of Salem, Massachusetts, and city of Vancouver took a collaborative approach with the community, like involving them throughout the planning, designing, and evolution phase, but let the decision-making authority to the city staff. That's how they are ensuring that traffic calming measures are being implemented in the neighborhood that really need them. Also prioritizing the skill and expertise is of city staff. And in my new interview with those cities, they shared that they have been using this approach for a year, and they haven't received any complaint from the resident, next. And the last and the third challenge is in the execution of traffic calming measures. Currently, currently, we are only implementing permanent measures. What if we install a temporary measures first to see community's reaction? And if they like it, we install permanent measures. That's exactly what city of Salem, Massachusetts are doing right now. They install temporary measures in the first phase, gather feedback from the community during this period, and if all goes well, they install permanent measures, uh, within six months. This phased approach is very effective as it provides the community with a practical way to experience the traffic calming measures in their daily lives. On the other hand, staffs can also assess the effectiveness of the traffic calming measures in reducing vehicle speed. This approach will also give the staff the flexibility to adjust the design, next. Thank you all for listening to my presentation. I'm current, currently working on a report out where I will share detailed overview of my findings of this program, including examples of data dashboard, cost of temporary measures, recommendation about timeline and community engagement strategies. I am happy to answer any question you might have. If not, have a wonderful evening.
Okay, thank you, Misty. Uh, I just, I wanna say, one, uh, as Misty's project is coming into, to an end at the mayor's office, for all you in the audience, she is looking for a full-time job. So, don't let this amazing talent, uh, go to waste. And I will just say, she has been diligent and working and capturing my attention. Um, when I was at a conference last year, I, I learned about, uh, city of Salem in Massachusetts and kind of the work they were doing. So, when we brought Misty on, I said, "I want you to start with the concept of, what would it be like if we just agreed that, uh, streets were unsafe? If our community members told us they were unsafe and we just believed them, what kind of project could we build if we had that mindset?" And this presentation embodied that. You did such a great job. I know presenting to a city council is super intimidating, but you did wonderful. We do have a couple of ca, uh, questions, Counselor Dugger?
Um, as the mayor said, I've been working on this for a long time too, so I'm super excited for this. Thank you. Uh, question, well, a comment and a question. Um, it said on the original sign that it was just through residential streets and neighborhoods. Um, to me, that gets a little blurring when, when we talk about downtown because it's both residential and there's through streets. For instance, in our downtown, within the last eighteen months, we've had cars drive through two different businesses, right? Like, that's wild to me. And these are not at the intersections, they're not at the, a point where a car would do this. This is because of reckless driving and things like that, right? Like, situations that, that, uh, that, that, that are clearly out of control. So, um, I wonder if we have thought about maybe including some downtown areas that, that are certainly residential, but also kind of mixed use? If we've thought about that? Um, and then I think about this from an equity lens, because right now, we, this council, this has been a priority of ours for a long time, and we passed a Complete Streets program. So, I'm confident that going forward, this is gonna be a lot better. But then it becomes a situation of the existing residents of Beaverton, the existing taxpayers are on da, more dangerous streets than the newest, uh, developments, right? Because th, those are gonna be safer as they're built. So, um, if, I don't, I don't know if you have any thoughts somehow beyond what you've mentioned, which is fantastic, and I love what Salem is doing, but like, uh, so, so, so can we expand to like other areas of downtown? And then are there o, other areas, um, beyond that tactical, like, um, assess quickly, try something, and then see how, that, that you would recommend?
I can start with just kind of, because that's one of the things that we'll be exploring in terms of next steps.
Okay.
So, she's got a ton of research and documentation she's gonna be sharing, and that's where staff is gonna kind of be picking up where she'll be leaving off to evaluate the kind of specific criteria of the program. So, that, that's kind of that next piece of looking at, right now, we tend to focus on, um, local streets, neighborhood routes, and some collectors. So, that will be a conversation that we'll need to have as part of the program update as to what streets we want included in this program.
I'm so grateful that you are here. Someone hire her.
Thank you for your comment.
And I would, uh, I would just mention that I think you know by now that my style is first meaningful step. And so, while I want us to do all of those things, what we're hearing from the major roads, we're hearing from is neighborhoods. And so, I implored Misty to like, look at the next meaningful step, but I do think our traffic engineer is gonna come back with some suggestions for us. But sometimes, we get caught in like trying to solve everything. And so, could we invest in some temporary measures? Because we'd have to purchase some of these temporary measures to go and just kind of start from that. And that's where I, I wanted her work to kind of start. Counselor Teeter?
Thank you, Misty. This is, this is really good, I'm really excited about this as well. Um, so thank you for sharing with us and for working so hard on this. Um, you mentioned, there are a whole bunch of applications that are sent to the traffic calming program that are, that are, that don't meet eligibility criteria. Do we keep record of those or what happens with those? Do they just, they get passed off somewhere else?
Yes, we do keep all of those and we keep all of the data that was used to evaluate them and determine whether or not they're eligible. And we keep them on the list for about six months to a year. If it comes back in again, then we go out and reevaluate.
Okay. Okay, I'm just thinking that could be a lot of effort that community members are putting in, hoping for an improvement, but it's not actually a part of this program. So if we can make that clear for people, then make sure they know where to go to actually get the support and changes that they want. Okay, yeah, I'm very excited about this. I'm, I love temporary measures that can help just see if something works. And if it doesn't, great, at least we didn't build something permanent that doesn't work and we can adjust a- as we learn. Uh, so yeah, thank you for working on this.
Thank you.
I'd also imagine, Councilor Teeter, that in the event we create new criteria, which is what I'm hoping out of today, that maybe we go back and data mine that list. Because if we adjust the criteria, my guess is some of those streets would qualify for some temporary measures. Councilor Hassan?
I just, I think I know the answer to the question, but I want to ask it. For all traffic calming, it does have to be initiated by someone in the community. Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so just my initial comments of that, which I think we've sort of said is there, well, we haven't said this up here. There are folks who know how to navigate these systems and to submit those things. And there's a lot of folks who do not. And then when you talk about the engagement piece, so, um, I really appreciated this presentation because it gave me a really great background on our process. Um, I think moving forward, which I'm sure will be some of our next steps, which others have mentioned, is like having more of a data-driven approach, right? Like, do we see an increase in, um, car accidents and/or issues? That gets complicated because I know those things aren't always reported. Um, but also multiple ways of identifying a project. So my favorite slide is slide sixteen, how does a project get into the program? Um, uh, I'd love to see our NACS help us in this area because I would like to see them start to feel like they're subject matter experts in these, in their neighborhoods and in building some of this. And I'd also like us to see, you know, really using some sort of data that we can start to gather to help us make more informed decisions. I think that is probably one of the things I get stuck on is like, okay, how, like, I think it's really easy for us to react to something that happens in our community, like there was an accident, right? And, and something happened. And so how are we equitably deciding where we're investing these traffic calming measures? So just thinking through what that looks like in that criteria, but this was a really great presentation, so thank you.
Thank you.
And I, I appreciate that. And I think part of what we could get out of it is data at the end. What I think I find challenging in our system now is that we do use a data-driven approach and the data-driven approach is not giving us any temporary measures. And so when we use the radar gun and it says, well, the speed is this, it's, it's fine. But when you know, when you're walking with your kids on a road, if someone is going six miles over twenty, that is fast. And so my hope would be we break free of the shackles of kind of how we've done it, try something new, and then take that data to make better informed decisions in the future because we're getting not what we want out of the system as it's built now. Council Kimmy?
Thank you for the presentation. Um, uh, the question I have is the data or data. The criteria that we, that we use, and sixty-six percent or sixty-six of them didn't meet the criteria to pass into review. What is the criteria that we are using?
Or are checking eligibility?
Yes.
Um, can you?
Yeah, so currently it's speed and it needs to be more than five miles per hour over the posted speed. So when a request comes in, we go out, we collect speed and volume, uh, data. And if that criteria is not met, um, then it's considered not eligible for the program.
Right, um, I want to, follow-up question to that is that, that criteria that you use is the one that you use nationally?
Yes, in the review of programs that, uh, we looked at, when there's a criteria like that included, that is a common criteria for, for the evaluation component of it.
And that criteria requirement is, as I say, used nationally all over the United States, regardless of neighborhood streets, congested streets, or highway?
It is used nationally, but it's not a set standard or like a requirement that we use that. So we have, um, the opportunity here to explore different, uh, criteria to make that decision on.
Okay, um, I'd like to hear that for future conference, um, conversations because one thing I have learned that is so far Beaverton have been using one criteria that's used nationally. And regards to that criteria, many of the neighborhood streets do not meet and pass. So they don't consider pedestrian safety or, uh, they only count cars and speed and maybe prior accidents. But it's, it's, it's after the fact that they don't prevent. We want preventative measures because nothing really seriously happened, but everybody can feel is dangerous walking with the kids or biking. So if you could come up with next phase, next conversation, come up with a specific criteria that could be used in, in high-density neighborhood versus suburbs area, that'd be nice. I don't know how you can come up with that.
So I think one thing that Misty's documentation will include is some recommendations on the things that need to be considered. That's demographics, that's key destinations in the area. So that's, is it near a school or a park? Are there sidewalks present? Um, speed and volume may be a component of what we need to look at, but I think the ho- the recommendations are, are kind of focusing on what else could that be expanded to be? So that it's not just that kind of one criteria, but that it is really considering the context that the street is in and how that street is being used.
Just a quick one, sorry, I don't want to make this a work session, but, um, I noticed there's three phases, but it's total nine steps, right? And because of it, it's about takes two to three years to get to. Maybe, is it required by the law that's set by state or whomever to go through all that phase? Or can we shorten and streamline the, the process?
Nope, there are no, um, state or federal requirements that guide the traffic calming program. So that's something that the city has the, um, ability to adopt a program based on their, uh, priorities, their goals, and their vision for safety in the city.
Yes, I'd like to have that conversation also for the future. Thank you.
Welcome to the conversation, Council Kimmy, we've been having for seven years. That's why we had this presentation tonight. Council Tivnan?
Thank you to Council Kimmy's point, not to turn this into a work session. Um, I, but I did, one thing occurred to me. First off, uh, it's wonderful to see us thinking more nuanced a- around areas where we've only had blunt instruments in the past to address them in the form of what the, the universal standards are for our streets. There, there is so much efficiency that can be found in those as well as, as certain levels of, of equity, but there can also be some that's lost in the process as well. And being able to look at these, um, just more as they exist in, in relativity to their surroundings is very intriguing. And I think the outcomes of this could be, uh, enhanced safety for our community members. So I'm excited about that. The one area where I'm like, oh gosh, uh, is what's the difference in level of effort? And what does it look like time-wise for city staff? Uh, the, beginning to end for processes like this. I know that a lot is going to be documented along the way of, um, dialing this in so that there's consistency in how we are doing this. But also maybe tracking the time involved too, so that we just have a better understanding of, um, any increases in staff resources that might be needed to a- apply this more thoughtful approach to calming on our streets. So something I wanted to throw out there.
Awesome. Thank you, Councilor Tivnan. My, my early assumption would be it would reduce it because if you guys knew how many rejections and referrals and how much staff time goes into saying no, it's astronomical versus just saying yes. I bet we, we will save a lot of staff time. Thank you, uh, for joining us tonight and what a great collaboration this was. And before we go, I would be remiss to not thank Nathan and Jen on my team for helping facilitate the fellowship, making sure that city staff was engaged and making sure that Misty had a meaningful experience here at the city. So thank you, guys.
Thank you all.
All right. We are on to our second presentation of the evening, Agenda Bill two, four, one, five, four, the three-year annual supportive housing services. Uh, so I'd like to welcome you guys up. I've only been talking about SHS for three hours today, so this is a welcome continuation of a conversation we continue to have. Thank you.
This, oh, I'm sorry. I'm gonna take two. My name is Chad Stover. I'm the Community Services and Homelessness Program Manager for the city of Beaverton. And I'm here tonight just to introduce our two speakers from Washington County. With me, we have Jess Larson, who's the Assistant Director of Homeless Services, and Nicole Sting, who is their Strategic Initiatives and Relations Manager. And they're going to present on Supportive Housing Services, uh, Year Three Annual Report. So I will turn it over to them.
Hey Chad, and, and hello Mayor Beatty, members of the, the coun- uh, council. It's good to, to be with you this evening. For the record, Nicole Sting, I use she/her pronouns, with Washington County. I was with you, um, last year to give an update on our, our Year Two Annual Report for the Supportive Housing Services measure. At that time, I shared the story of Russell. And before diving into all the great work that happened into Year Three, I want to bring us back to that moment. Russell, um, at the end of Program Year Two, uh, had just left an encampment and was living in the Hillsborough Bridge Shelter. I'm really excited to bring that full circle and let you know Russell is now stably housed thanks to the SHS program. Um, and, and as we go through our, our presentation today, we'll, we'll throw a lot of facts and numbers at you. Every time you see one of those numbers, I want you to think of Russell, um, of, of what he went through to get to stable housing and the work it takes from our service providers and outreach workers to bring folks inside. Each one of these stories is, is someone like Russell that thanks to SHS, we've been able to, to stabilize. All right, and, and before diving deep in, I'm going to take a few, a few look backs and, and, uh, big picture looks. The first one is, is on some of those big highlights. Um, so I'll, I'll uplift, we, we spent one hundred percent of our SHS budget. Um, we're, we're doing the good work of bringing folks, um, into housing with over twelve hundred people moved into housing thanks to SHS-funded programs. And, uh, over four hu- four thousand people eviction prevented thanks to SHS programs. So those folks that didn't enter our system that were able to, to remain stably housed. And the big exciting number is that over ten thousand figure. That's people served in street outreach. That's folks, um, walking into, uh, a shelter for, for quick services. That's people every day moving into housing. And then to take another step back, wow, the impact of SHS in, in just three years. Um, many folks tell the story of, of being an outreach worker, being one of the twelve prior to SHS and how hard it was for them to meet the needs of, of what they saw on the street. We're proud to have a much bigger system supporting the, the existing crisis. We're also proud that we now have a permanent shelter. We'll show pictures about it later, but we're so excited to celebrate with you today, the official opening of folks moving into the Beaverton Shelter. Um, those shelters and shelters across the, the county are, are keeping folks warm and saving lives. And then ultimately, what every homeless services system should be working towards is ha- is housing capacity. And that's getting folks in the door. So housing capacity, as it looks here, isn't sticks and bricks as you think of it in the production side of things. These are, these are vouchers, these are slots for folks to go into. So we went from being able to house seven hundred and seventy-five people prior to SHS. That number is well over twenty-eight hundred. So we're really incredibly excited about that work in the system that we've been able to build. That's taking a, a look at, at our whole system. And, and now I want to dive into the, the Program Year Three numbers. You'll see here, um, we set ambitious goals and in some places we exceeded them, in some places we didn't meet them. Um, and it's important for, for us to, to bring that forward to you. Um, one thing I would highlight, our permanent supportive housing goal, we were about a, a little over a hundred folks out, or excuse me, a hundred households away from that goal. But it is important to note, we exceeded our permanent supportive housing goal by a hundred and thirty folks last year. We had a surge of folks getting into housing at the end of the fiscal year that just wasn't accounted for when we built our, our work plan that's here before you. So we, we feel over the course of time, we've, we've met that goal. Um, our rapid rehousing program, we shared with you last year that we didn't meet that goal last year either. It was a brand-new program. It launched late. We're still learning the kinks of that program. There's maybe some prioritization things we'll look at. There's, there's work we need to do with our providers to make that work correctly and, and serve the folks we need it to serve. And that same story of a, a program launching later than anticipated with some kinks to work out is the same, um, same story you see for the move-in-only fund. Now that i- or move-in-ready fund, that is a, a one-time assistance to get folks that might, might just need a little bit of assistance to break through their economic barrier into stable housing. Um, we launched that later in the fiscal year than we anticipated, thus, thus the lower number. And one more thing I want to uplift, uh, Washington County has been using our SHS carryover funds to invest in eviction prevention. Those funds are, are quickly dwindling, um, so I want to call that out. So, so you all are tracking as, as we go into and continue through Program Year Four. And of course, when we look at, uh, the, the metric numbers, we want to understand who we're serving. We're really proud to say that our SHS-funded programs are reaching more diverse communities than, uh, than our other homeless services-funded programs. And that, we, we think is due in large part to our strong partnerships with culturally-specific organizations. Um, we're really proud to be working with Centro, with Bianna Star and others to help bring folks inside. And we're also seeing that our eviction prevention resources and resources that serve what Metro calls Population B. Um, that's the twenty-five percent of resources are designed to go to Population B. Population A is folks with, um, chronic homelessness and have a disabling condition. So that's a little wonky, but I want to do, I do want to call out our, our Population B programs tend to serve a more diverse population. And I also want to call out and, and be accountable to, um, to our programs not reaching where we think they should reach as it relates to Asian and Native populations. So we shared that with you last time. We've done some outreach with, with culturally-specific organizations serving Asian communities. We didn't quite get where we wanted to go there. So this is something we'll continue to bring back. I'll maybe forecast for you, if I'm here again next year, saying the same thing. We're, we're going to keep working on it, um, but we might not get it in one year. Now to look at what the system is. Um, for shelter and outreach, really the front door to our system, we're proud to have, as I, as I mentioned, four hundred and twenty SHS-supported, um, units, but that's over four hundred and thirty-three shelter units across the county with sixty shelter pods currently open. Um, we have next up, but this has already happened, the slide was drafted prior to this. We're excited to have the, the Beaverton Year-Round Shelter open. Um, I was talking with Jeremy Taves from Open Door this morning. He's incredibly excited to get folks into that beautiful facility. Um, we're also really excited that the Tigard Shelter, Just Compassion's Resource Center and Shelter will be opening this spring. Um, and we'll, we're also currently seeking out additional pod sites for, for the thirty pods that are not open. And what does this look like on our map? You see homelessness doesn't exist in one part of Washington County. You'll notice that along the key transportation corridors are shelter units for, for folks. We have a concentration in South County, a concentration in Western County. And then, um, we'll, I'll talk more about what it looks like in, in Beaverton, but it's important to note that as homelessness doesn't exist in one place, neither does our shelter system, neither does our outreach and access system. So these, we have, um, regionally-designated outreach teams that can get to know the folks experiencing homelessness, they can build relationships. Um, and they're, they're seated in, in their areas across the state, or excuse me, across the county. And there are also some drop-in centers located here. Now, these are currently open drop-in centers, um, and one that is planned to be opened. Um, so, uh, those, those drop-in centers, uh, provide access center services. They're helping folks with laundry, they're connecting people to other services, getting them enrolled in housing programs. This is an incredibly important step to get people welcome into our system so then they can move through it into housing. And now, um, one, one important thing is, uh, we don't do this alone. We have a lot of partners to work with, and I want to start with your partnership. Um, we're really proud to, to have city liaisons, um, with three contracts supporting six cities, uh, excuse me, five cities across the region. Um, Chad introduced us. We're really grateful for his partnership and for, for Megan's partnership before him. And, uh, we're also excited to share, um, of the four hundred and thirty-three shelter beds, about a hundred and sixty are located in or around Beaverton. So that's an incredible, um, uh, concentration to meet the concentration of population here. And we also see that we have four hundred and sixty-plus regional long-term rental assistance vouchers leased up here in, in Beaverton. So these are those flexible, uh, slots that folks can take with them, they're leased up here in Beaverton. Um, your outreach provider in Beaverton is Greater Good Northwest. And it's important to note that Homeplate, um, serves the entire county supporting youth as does the immigrant and refugee community of Oregon. Um, serves immigrant and refugees, uh, across the county as well. And we're eager for, for, I mentioned, I've mentioned this, I think, four times now. I'm happy to mention a fifth, the Beaverton Shelter is so beautiful and we're eager about that partnership. We're glad to join you last week to celebrate that opening. And one more thing I'll call out, um, we're excited that, that SHS dollars supported a capital investment of the Our partnerships with law enforcement are a key driver of how we implement time, place, manner policies. We have e-beds that are set aside at shelters, so if law enforcement finds someone in need of a shelter, they can go, they can drop them off, and that person can be housed for the night. But we also know, along with law enforcement, probably our biggest partner, or biggest service partner, is the healthcare system. The intersection of housing needs and behavioral health needs is grave across the nation, and it's particularly acute here in Oregon. We're really grateful for partnerships with Care Oregon, as well as the Low Acuity Transitional Support Program, the LACS program, as we call it. That's a partnership at the Hillsborough Bridge Shelter with Virginia Garcia that allows folks exiting shelter without a home to go to, to go and have a stable place where they can meet their medical needs and recover. And I'll also call out, we have a nationally-leading healthcare case conferencing program. This is wonky, but I think you all will go there with me. We know, when it comes to case conferencing, we have to do a lot of data sharing, and I think you can imagine healthcare system data is very challenging to share. We worked incredibly closely with our health partners to create a national case conferencing, a medical case conferencing, to complement the other case conferencing we do. And that's really important, because it's some of the only medical case conferencing that's happening in the nation. We've joined our partners to speak at conferences, and it's a model that other places in the nation are starting to look to and steal from, and we're proud to share that information. And it also goes without saying, none of this work is possible without our service providers. We have 24 service providers that have a high rate of staff with lived experience. Their staffer are more diverse than the general population and reflective of the folks they're serving. And what's really important is they're earning a livable wage. They're not, they're able to maintain their own housing while providing housing services to the community, and that's incredibly important to us and to our regional partners across the state. And one more thing I want to call out, we're really excited about our Housing Careers Program. I know we brought this to you last time. We enrolled 45 participants. We started 45 new housing careers last year. And in this year, we've expanded those employment services to go beyond folks interested in working in housing services. So we've kind of helped our organization staff up, and now we're supporting careers beyond just those in housing. And the last partnership I want to talk through, I forgot to remove the recruitment underway. It's no longer underway. We are reviewing applications, but in the Program Year Three, we launched the Homeless Solutions Advisory Council. This was a one-governance approach that took together our Homeless Plan Advisory Council, our Continuum of Care Board, into one body, working in a concentrated effort to address homelessness across the region. You'll see the members here. You might recognize a few of them. And there's three technical subcommittees that support this work, the Performance Evaluation, the Lived Experience Subcommittee, and the Equitable Procurement Subcommittee. So a lot of work that happens there. I would encourage you all to listen and the folks online and in the room to follow the work of the Solutions Council. It's really important to have their foundation, their expertise, leading us as we navigate some challenging problems that I'm going to tee my colleague Jess up to speak to.
Good evening, Mayor. Counselors, pleasure to be here. My name is Jess Larson, for the record, and I'm going to wrap up our presentation with just a brief overview of the financials behind the Supportive Housing Services Measure being implemented here in Washington County. So this slide shows you growth of our programmatic expenditures over the first three years, with the fourth bar chart describing the planned investments, our currently-approved budget to fund operations of this program in fiscal, in the fourth program year, the current fiscal year. It's important to know that each year, the system's capacity grew, with each service provider being able to house and, sorry, being able to hire staff and train them to do the work of outreach and housing, navigation and placement and retention work. And then each time a household is housed, those really critical ARLA vouchers that provide long-term rent assistance to people who've experienced chronic homelessness pay the rent month over month. And so that demonstrates the significant growth in expenditures year over year with the added staffing capacity and the added rent assistance commitments, essentially. We're really not significantly going to be expanding shelter capacity or other new community infrastructure as we level off the program investments and have sort of reached the capacity of the annual funding available through the measure. So you'll see, as we plan ahead, a leveling off of these operations, but continued growth here in the fourth year, as all of those housers are getting our community housed, and we're continuing to increase our investments in those rent assistance programs especially. Yes, please. So this is a quick view of last year's forecast compared to the actual revenue received, and then this year's forecast, the initial forecast that informed our current year's budget. And of course, the actuals will be known at the end of the fiscal year. This was the first fiscal year in the implementation of the Supportive Housing Services Measure where the forecast was greater than the actual revenue received. It was close, but it was $6.2 million less than the actual forecast that was received. And that's the nature of this, of the work of economic forecasting, and the reality of the income-based revenue tools that are taxes that fund the Supportive Housing Services Measure. But it's a significant thing to note, because in the early years, the collections were much greater than anticipated, and we are no longer expecting that trend, because the forecasting has caught up with the actuals of the measure. We are actually anticipating updated forecasting information, and based on the end of the fiscal year from last year, we anticipate the forecast to be updated downward and actually see that we are likely not to receive the initially forecasted revenue for this fiscal year, and a decline in the forecasted revenue for the upcoming year, and kind of a resetting of that trend. So that information is very soon coming and impacting current programmatic work and planning for our budget year fiscal in the Program Year Five. Oh, great. Okay, so moving on, this is a very high level of financials, and we're happy to come back with any questions you might have, but a conclusion here, just bringing back to the story of Hope, another family who was helped in one of our shelter programs, a project turnkey that was a partnership with the state and family promised at Walton Valley. They have 70 shelter beds operating in Tigard, and this family was served through them. Their young children are not photographed, but we got to meet many of them at the grand opening, who are so grateful to have a safe place to call home while their family works on stable housing, thanks to the ongoing operations made possible through this measure. So Project Turnkey is an example of great community infrastructure that one-time dollars were able to make possible, and the Supportive Housing Services Measure is needed to sustain the operations of that shelter program, just like your shelter program, just like the outreach teams, and those ARLA vouchers, and all the other ongoing programs here in Beaverton specifically, and across Washington County. And then, is that our last slide? Thank you. We love to end with the highlight here, that since the creation of the Supportive Housing Services Measure, nearly 3,000 people have ended their homelessness here in Washington County. They are sleeping sound and safe in an apartment funded with the Supportive Housing Services Measure and supported with those case management and wraparound services. So we will continue to house the community in need and waiting for housing still outside or in one of our shelter beds tonight, and continue to support these nearly 3,000 households. And because of these investments, and because of partnerships like yours and new shelters here in Beaverton and across the region, we've actually broken national trends and seen a decline in unsheltered homelessness here in Washington County. So while we see upticks in unsheltered homelessness across the nation and across the state here in Washington County because of the expansion of shelter programming and all of these programs through Supportive Housing Services, that number went down by 35% in a two-year period. So it's pretty remarkable, and we're so grateful for your partnership to help keep this work going.
Awesome. I just thought you'd leave it up there for effect for a minute, but a reduction of 35% is quite remarkable. I want to thank you and the leadership. I know Chair Harrington's out in the audience, and just the work it took to get this measure passed and the work that the chair is doing on behalf of the county and the mayors to make sure that the decline in revenue doesn't come to fruition, particularly when we're seeing such amazing results in Year Three. I think it's also important for anyone watching that, like, it took a while to get the program off the ground, and it wasn't necessarily the county or the cities. It was Metro deciding how they wanted the program to run. And so while we're in Year Three, we're really, in my opinion, in Year Two. And to see these kind of results is remarkable, and to create changes right now and create instability is not what our community needs. And so I appreciate that Metro is searching to bring accountability measures, because the business community is asking for it. The results speak for themselves. And so I appreciate you guys taking some time tonight to share this with us. I know some of my colleagues have some things as well. Counselor Teeter.
Mayor, you actually said exactly what I was wanting to touch on, so thank you for the presentation.
Stun them with my awesome points. Counselor Duggar.
Thank you, Mayor. I will also not echo what you just said. Stability is very good. I do have two quick questions, just for context. The budget numbers, that's the SHS system as a whole for Metro, not Washington County. Is that correct?
The slide shows our Washington County expenditures and budget, and this slide here is just Washington County's portion of the Supportive Housing Services Measure.
So Washington County was $6 million under, on our allocation.
That's correct, yes. So Washington County receives 33.3%. That's...
Of the allocation.
Of the allocation. And so our revenue was less $6.2 million last year than was originally forecasted. And when Metro, it's important to be clear, when Metro releases their forecast, they say, this is for the region, a plus or minus $50 million range. That's likely to be the case, less the case, as they become more familiar with the revenue, but because this is still early year in programs, and these revenues are going to be highly volatile with our tax base, and we're still learning what happened during the pandemic and the impacts to economic trends. So we are aware that the forecasts are just forecasts, they're not actuals, and we're needing to plan for stability in our system operations, so that no matter what those changes might be year over year, we can keep the lights on at the shelters and the people housed and with the ARLA vouchers.
And that was a great transition for my next question, which is, what are your reserve targets for your funds?
Thank you. Excellent question. There are recommended and required reserves. In addition to the annual, well, let me start back. Because it took a couple years to ramp up, we were able to use unexpected revenues that came in in the early collection and under expended, unspent funds in those early years to fully fund our required and recommended reserves. So there's a requirement for a 15%, a recommendation for a 10% set aside for stability reserves, and a recommendation for 15%. We have the full 15% funded. And an additional programmatic reserve to, aside from economic shifts, to have an additional 5% set aside for any economic or programmatic crises that might occur.
That's helpful. And the last question, is there any reconciliation for, you said the allocation was 33%. Do we know how much is generated by Washington County as far as the funding component? And is there any reconciliation with that?
Yeah, there's ongoing analysis that Metro is conducting, and I would be happy to help connect your council to that data. I'm not, I'm less familiar with it, but essentially, it's complicated, because a lot of the, both personal and business tax can't, some of it can't be specifically allocated to a part of a county in the region because of how business is conducted. But nonetheless, the trends are generally, the revenue collection, aside from that revenue that can't be clearly directed to any one of the three counties, the trends are in line with the initial allocation. It's sort of the initial analysis that Metro has provided about that.
Yeah, and that's what I had read, and I brought that up, because I know transient populations also move across county lines, so it's really easy to say, Washington County money should be spent here, but the reality is, it's more complicated than that, and that's kind of what I wanted to highlight. So thank you for all of this. It's really, I'm really happy, I'm the kind of budget nerd here, so I'm really happy to hear about the reserves and stability there. So, well done, and thank you for the presentation.
I do appreciate that you said recommended 15%, but it's not really recommendation from Metro, because they'll hold it against you if you don't do it. So while it is recommended, it is basically a requirement. Counselor Kimmy.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. I remember last time you guys were here, and I got nervous when you said, I said, we spent all the money, not realizing the money was whatever designated that was spent, but when I read, one of the slides showed that you are no longer building new infrastructure, but you're focusing on providing rent, basically, and what's the reasoning behind that?
Thank you. That's an excellent, I appreciate you bringing us back to that, because I think my statement was less clear. In fact, our council today did actually award some capital infrastructure. It's really important. So we are continuing a plan. We have a plan for one-time investments in critical infrastructure like shelters, access centers, transitional housing, to be able to implement these programs. That shelter capacity has kind of fully been identified, the permanent shelter here in Beaverton, there's one underway and nearly complete in Tigard, and ground will be broken soon in the City of Hillsborough for that permanent shelter. Access centers are sort of in the middle of the process. We have two underway, one that was just awarded today, and that project will be moving forward, and we hope to be seeing the work towards a future access center here in Beaverton. And then transitional housing, we had our board take action on awarding to future transitional housing projects today, too. And that, we are getting very close to sort of fully allocating or committing all of those one-time infrastructure investments, and we won't, we are not likely to see the SHS program be able to generate future investments like this, because the cost of sustaining operations will consume the majority of the revenue. But in the early years, we were not able to consume all of that revenue, and so those unspent funds became opportunities for these one-time community infrastructure investments.
Thank you. I feel better after hearing that. Follow-up is, when you provide ongoing, I guess, rent assistance, do they have a timeline to how long it's going to be for that individual person or the family?
This is an excellent question. We have rent assistance intervention or support programs that are both short-term, medium-term, and long-term, and that, they're designed intentionally to meet the different needs of households. It's important to know, Washington County is the most expensive county to rent in anywhere in the state of Oregon, and the truth is, for folks living with fixed incomes with disabilities, it's going to be very hard and sometimes impossible to find anywhere to rent with that income. It's about $1,000 a month that folks live on, and we know average rents are closer to $1,500 for a one-bedroom here in Washington County. So for folks with those permanent disabling conditions and very limited incomes, sometimes long-term rent assistance, where they pay a portion of what they can afford, and the voucher pays the difference, so that they have a safe and stable house to live in, that long-term or permanent voucher is necessary. Whereas other households where there's been some sort of economic interruption or reason why they haven't had resources, but they're going to get their back on their feet and able to generate income to be able to pay rent, we're going to pay their rent for a limited amount of time until they're stable again. So we have rent assistance tools that are tailored to intervene for the right level for the need of each household.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Thank you.
Counselor Hassan?
Yes, one question, one comment. Trying to move us along. Can you tell us the difference, tell me the difference, between Rapid Re-Housing and Move-In-Ready Fund, please?
Excellent question. That is a medium-term rent assistance program, Rapid Re-Housing, and a Move-In-Ready is a short-term. All you need is the move-in costs, and then you can cover the rent from there. Great, let's get your down payment or your deposit paid, because most households who are experiencing homelessness don't have first and last months saved up on top, you know, so we'll help get the household started, and then they...
Excellent question. That is a medium-term rent assistance program, rapid rehousing, and a move-in ready is a short-term. All you need is the move-in costs, and then you can cover the rent from there. Great, let's get your down payment or your deposit paid because most households who are experiencing homelessness don't have first and last months saved up on top, you know, so we'll help get the household started, and then they can take over the rent from there.
So what, how long is rapid rehouse? Like, what is that, like six?
It is a one-to, sorry, one-month to two-year program. And we use a progressive assistance strategy that helps the household sort of reduce their reliance on that rent assistance as their income and ability to take over the rent increases.
Okay. My second, it's more a comment, but feel free to respond. In the provider partnerships and capacity building slide, you talked about annual salaries from $50,000 to $60,000, which like 10 years ago felt really great. So I just don't know, like, you know, what work is being done. I know that's not necessarily on you, but, you know, I think 10 years ago, maybe that was something that was livable in the household. You know, I just wonder long-term what that looks like. So just something that kind of stuck out to me a little bit.
Thank you, Counselor. I appreciate this. 10 years ago, I was a case manager, and I remember we were trying to get our salaries up to $40,000. So this is a constant struggle in this work to make sure wages are livable, especially keeping pace with costs of housing because we certainly don't want the people doing this work to need housing assistance. Right now, this range is above the trends across the region, and you're right, we're going to have to keep at that because we need to make sure these are livable wage jobs and hopefully good-paying jobs where people stay in the work.
All right. I do have a couple of closing comments for us today. One, I think there's an area that the city needs a little help in still. So we built this wonderful facility that you guys toured, and we cut the ribbon on. When I was touring, the governor, I showed her the health clinic, which was something Reb Dexter helped us fund to create. We've not been able to convince an FQHC or somebody else to do some kind of staffing in there. And since you guys are the public health entity, I was relying on my past healthcare executive relationships, but it would be helpful in the future to have some healthcare options available at the facility we built for it. So that would be an ask for us in the future. You know, I am incredibly thankful for the partnership in that shelter, for the services at Homeplate Youth Services that you guys are doing, and at the Salvation Army. I do want to ask where we are likely, are we likely to see a day center, given the cuts that are coming in Beaverton?
The, this is an excellent question. Well, first, for your first comment, thank you. That is, we are tracking it. We are really excited about that healthcare space, like I had to tour recently. We have a staff person who does health and housing integration, and so, yes, thank you for that note, and it's on our radar and a commitment to us, too. Regarding the access center, we just reviewed this today with our board. There are still resources set aside for the capital improvements to create an access center, and the capital awards we made today and all capital awards going forward have to come with a caveat that there's a contingency of a question here about ongoing operations because what's not in question is the current set aside of one-time resources from those earlier years. What's in question is the long-term ability to sustain these programs if the measure is reduced significantly, and the resources in Washington County are significantly reduced. So that is, that is a question for all of the capital projects underway, is an uncertainty for long-term operations depending on those reductions. And frankly, it's a question for all of our capital investments already here, like our project turnkeys. What will, how will we sustain these programs if we have to face significant reductions?
I appreciate that, and I knew the answer, but I just needed for you guys to say it on record because we're going to need some help from the business community and other levels of government to come alongside the chair and I in the next couple of weeks as we continue to have these conversations with Metro about the importance of the people actually doing the work and what our community actually needs. I do want to end on saying that I did send a letter to the county commissioners and to the county chair about areas of funding that the city is funding out of our general fund that I want you to keep top of mind. I know we're talking about a lot of cuts in the future, but, you know, city needs around our library support person because our library is acting as a de facto day center in its current capacity. The reason we've reduced homelessness to quite the degree we have in Beaverton is because of our bike team officers play a very critical role in that process. That is also coming out of our general fund and cleanup. And I know the question is around allowable uses, and it's a challenging position for the county. It's not that the county doesn't want to do it. I understand the constraints coming from Metro, but I need my colleagues and everyone else to understand that the city is contributing quite a bit out of our general fund. And as we're facing financial challenges over the next year, it's harder and harder for us to continue to support these things out of the general fund. So, thank you for joining us today and having a hard conversation. I'm sure we'll see a lot more of each other over the next year. Thank you.
I hope so. Thank you.
And we're going to take a quick five-minute recess as we reset for our public hearing. Hearing on ordinance amending the comprehensive plan, the zoning map, and ordinance number 2050, the Beaverton Development Code, LU 42024-00682, Cooper Mountain Community Plan. I now call to order the public hearing. Before we move into the substance of the hearing, I'll ask the city attorney to cover some preliminary legal matters.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Robin McIntyre, Assistant City Attorney. As this is a land use hearing, I've got a brief pre-hearing statement. Tonight's hearing will proceed as follows. After the preliminary legal matters, staff will make a presentation. The council will have an opportunity to ask questions. Then council will hear public testimony in the following order. First, from those in support, then by those opposed, and finally by those neither in support nor opposed. After the council asks any final questions of staff, the hearing will be closed, and the council will deliberate towards a decision. Anyone wishing to speak at this hearing should follow the instructions on tonight's agenda. For those attending in person, please complete a yellow visitor comment card found on the table by the entry doors. Once the card is filled out, give the card to the city recorder seated at the end of the dais and wait to be called. If you've joined the meeting by phone, you can enter *9 to let the city recorder know you wish to speak. Alternatively, if you've joined the meeting online, you can let, you can click on the raise hand feature to let the city recorder know you wish to speak. Each member of the public will have up to three minutes to speak. When you speak, please give your name and address for the record. Now I will explain the criteria the council must use to make its decision tonight, and then I will ask the members of council if they wish to make any disclosures. So the council's decision on the adoption of the ordinance must be based on the consideration of the statewide planning goals and administrative rules adopted under ORS Chapter 197, applicable federal or state statutes or rules, applicable plans and rules adopted by Metro, and the city's comprehensive plan and development code. The council may consider any relevant testimony that it receives. Failure to raise an issue during the city's hearing on this ordinance precludes an appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. Any party with standing may appeal the decision of the city council to the State Land Use Board of Appeals according to the rules adopted by that board. Persons with standing include those who submit written comments or present oral comments. But this time, I would like to ask if any members of council wish to declare a potential or actual conflict of interest. Okay, let the record show there were no responses. Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the ability of any member of council to participate in this decision? Okay, let the record show no response. Presiding Officer, Mayor, that concludes the preliminary legal matters.
Thank you. Let's proceed to the staff presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and City Council, my name is Brian Martin. I'm the Long Range Planning Manager for the city. And just briefly before we get started, I wanted to thank council for its leadership and thank our community members, our jurisdictional and agency partners, and our truly dedicated staff members who worked on this project for the last five years. And with that, I'll let Rob Sellar take it away. Thank you.
Thank you. Alyssa Maxwell, Anna Zatinsky, Lauren Russell, Brittany Igheta, and Kara Hall, all of whom may participate in the discussion at the end of the presentation. I'm here today to present amendments that would implement the Cooper Mountain Community Plan. To start, I will briefly present the project overview. I will then present amendments to the comprehensive plan, zoning map, and development code in that order. The amendments are in Exhibit 1 of your packet. The city council's decision tonight is to determine whether the proposed amendments meet the applicable approval criteria. The approval criteria and findings that support them are in the staff report. This is Attachment 1 in your packet. Attachments 6 through 9 are about public testimony. Testimony includes comments from Washington County about the transportation system and is accompanied by a memo from staff. After I present the amendments, I will then end with the approval criteria for each application and a staff recommendation to recommend approval of the three amendments. This project started in 2019 after Metro approved the city's request to expand the urban growth boundary to bring land inside the boundary to help meet significant housing needs for the city and region. This map shows the 1,200-acre project area. The area is anticipated to provide about 5,000 homes, which includes a mix of single detached homes, middle housing, and multi-dwellings. The project also used a racial equity framework to guide decision-making from start to finish. The October 16th Planning Commission hearing, the Planning Commission recommended that city council approve the amendments with three minor modifications to the text amendment. These minor modifications, which address rules for small-scale commercial uses and community rooms, are described in Attachment 4, the land use order for the text amendment. And that brings us to the first application, comprehensive plan amendments. On the following slides, I will walk through an overview of the proposed amendments to each volume. I will start with Volume 5, Community Plans, since it provides the policy framework for amendments that will implement the community plan. The Cooper Mountain Community Plan is in Exhibit 1A in your packet. The proposed amendments would add a community plan to the comprehensive plan. It includes eight project goals, which provide regulatory guidance for updates to the zoning map and development code. The goals address topics such as equitable outcomes, a variety of new housing, natural resource protections, and access to safe, convenient transportation options and commercial uses near where people live. Community plan also includes a natural resources report that identifies significant wetlands, streams, riparian areas, and upland habitat. The infrastructure funding plan shows one way to fund infrastructure, but the city may consider additional options in the future. Proposed amendments also include updates to Volume 1. I'll start with updates to the city's land use map, which would include three new land use designations. The land use map tells us which goals and policies apply in an area and which implementing zoning districts can be applied within that designation. For the Cooper Mountain Commercial designation in red, the only implementing zone is Cooper Mountain Community Service. This designation is less flexible because its location is important to support the long-term viability of commercial uses in the area. The Cooper Mountain Mixed Use Corridor designation in purple allows three implementing zoning districts to be applied. This provides property owners with flexibility by allowing them to apply for zone changes on their property if the proposal still meets the intent of city policies. And for the Cooper Mountain Residential designation in yellow, the implementing zone is Cooper Mountain Residential Mix, which is intended for a mix of detached and attached housing. The proposed amendments include updates to other chapters in Volume 1 of the comprehensive plan. Proposed changes to Chapter 3 add new policies for the three Cooper Mountain land use designations, and proposed changes to Chapters 1 and 5 are minor, essentially updating noticing requirements and references to other plans. Proposed updates to Chapter 6 include new maps and policies that implement transportation goals. Updates to Chapter 7 generally add Cooper-specific policies that focus on natural resource protections and wildlife habitat, and proposed updates to Chapter 8 address landslide hazard risks. The proposed amendments also update the city's transportation system plan, also known as the TSP. The functional classification map for Cooper Mountain includes existing and proposed arterials, collectors, and neighborhood routes for the planned area. Local roads are not pictured here since their location is worked out at the time of development. This map was essential in assigning land use designations in key areas since the intent was to encourage development and land use patterns to support a variety of transportation options, including future transit service in the area. Other updates to the TSP include updating Chapters 2 and 4 in Volume 4 to match updates in Volume 1. In addition, the proposed amendments add a list of future Cooper Mountain projects that would be added to the city's TSP and identify transportation needs for the Cooper Mountain Community Plan That concludes proposed updates to the comprehensive plan and brings us to the second application, zoning map amendments. The zoning map tells us what development rules, such as allowed uses, building heights, and setbacks, are applied to development inside that zone. Two of these zones are intended to be mixed-use zones. The Cooper Mountain Community Service Zone, this is red on the map, requires some commercial square footage with developments, and the Cooper Mountain High Density Residential Zone, this is purple on the map, allows commercial but does not require it. In addition, three zones are intended for multi-dwellings and middle housing. They include Cooper Mountain Community Service, Cooper Mountain High Density Residential, and Cooper Mountain Multi-Dwelling Residential. These are the red, purple, and orange zones on the map. One zone is intended for a mix of single detached dwellings, middle housing, five-plexes, and six-plexes. This is called the Cooper Mountain Residential Mix Zone, yellow on the map. This zone also allows opportunities for small-scale commercial uses so that residents can walk to a corner store to buy food or a cup of coffee. The map also shows the parks overlay locations. This is marked on green on the map. When properties develop, they are required to provide open space. If the parks overlays on a property, the open space must be provided within the parks overlay first. The code includes incentives to make it more likely that property owners will dedicate the parks overlay open space to THPRD. That wraps up the zoning amendments and brings us to the text amendment section, which essentially means development code updates. In the interest of time, I will focus on code updates unique to the Cooper Mountain Community Plan area. However, in some cases, other code sections were updated to facilitate this work, and those changes apply citywide. The proposed code requires housing variety and integration in the CMRM zone for developments three acres and larger to help create more inclusive neighborhoods. It also provides a Cooper-specific planned unit development option, also known as a PUD. A PUD provides additional flexibility with multiple site development standards or design requirements. However, in exchange for that flexibility, the PUD must provide greater community benefits. The code also includes design requirements for five-plexes and six-plexes. The proposed code includes two types of natural resource protections, a resource overlay and a Cooper-specific tree code. The resource overlay designates areas where development is more limited to protect natural resources. The rules promote protections of these areas and tree planting within them. These three layers are used to identify the resource overlay, riparian habitat in blue, riparian upland habitat in green, and upland forest in this yellowish-brown. Rules apply to all of these areas. In addition to city rules, Clean Water Services also has rules for wetlands and stream buffers that will apply to blue areas on the map. The proposed amendments also regulate tree removal to help retain tree canopy in the future while allowing property owners to remove some trees. The tree code for Cooper Mountain proposes rules that aim to preserve existing trees, expand the tree canopy to reach a 40% tree canopy target in the planned area outside the nature park, and provide some development flexibility on sites with a lot of trees. That concludes a review of the proposed amendments and brings us to the approval criteria and Planning Commission recommendation. To recommend approval of the amendments, the city council must consider if the amendments comply with all relevant approval criteria in the comprehensive plan and development code. The approval criteria generally focuses on state, metro, and city requirements. The staff report, again, this is Attachment 1 in your packet, includes letters from Metro that indicate that the city's approach to natural resources protections and transportation, among other topics, complies with Metro requirements. among other topics, complies with metro requirements. That concludes the presentation. Staff recommends that City Council conduct the public hearing and receive all public testimony relating to the proposal. Considering the public testimony and the facts and findings presented in the staff report, deliberate on policy issues and other issues identified by City Council or the public, and then recommend approval of the Planning Commission recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions of staff? Okay. Seeing done, we are going to move into testimony. Now, I know we had mentioned that we were going to take it in support and opposition, but given the kind of complexity of people might not be opposed or in support, we're just going to take them in order. So with that, I'm going to, you have three minutes to address the council, and I'm going to call up Chair Harrington first.
It's on?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Beatty, councilors. Thank you for tonight's public hearing. In your materials this evening, you have a letter from the Washington County Board of Commissioners as Attachment 7.1 on page 3,597, followed by a staff letter, Item 7.2, page 3,599. I won't go over all the items in the letter. Rather, I am noting that one of the goals is safe and convenient travel choices. The Board of Commissioners has supported Washington County staff participation all during the process, the entire process, for this area. This is more than simply agreeing to disagree. We could design a collector that improves the wildlife and rain shed flow for this area. I'm a veteran elected official for this area, being first in urban reserves and then a UGB expansion area with all of the area's water flow. Our letter highlights our concern on safety. Neighborhood roads intersecting with county arterials while not meeting traffic signal requirements are dangerous. Having lost my neighbor, Palin Wu, crossing Walker Road in Beaverton to the bus stop we each used in December of 2005, that was a life-changing experience for me. I don't want you or your successors to have to live through an experience like that. And yes, I know, people get injured and their property from crashes gets impacted, but without it, it's much worse. So I'm hoping that you will please give your staff direction tonight to not adopt as-is, but to give them the opportunity, the direction, to work this out. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Harrington. Andrew, you are up next, and I believe you're joining us remotely.
Good evening, council members. I'm Andrew Abbe. I'm president of the Neighbors Southwest Neighborhood Advisory Committee. I'm speaking this evening in a personal capacity. I am not recommending any amendments to this agenda bill. I encourage council to support it, as has been brought forward by planning staff. It is a good balance between protecting open spaces and providing state-mandated density. I agree with the city of Beaverton in terms of not adding a new north-south vehicle connection at a collector classification level crossing McKernan Creek east of Southwest Grabhorn Road. The opportunity cost of that is there are limited resources to build infrastructure in this area, and those funds would be better spent improving 175th and Tile Flat Road and other existing arterials in the neighborhood. I appreciate the Planning Division briefings of the Neighbors Southwest NAC. They briefed us back in February, and I know that the Planning Division also briefed all of the NACs bordering Cooper Mountain. And we also appreciated receiving briefings by the Friends of Cooper Mountain, specifically Wendy Kroger and Dick Scouton. I particularly want to commend Rob Zeller. I think he set the gold standard for public involvement at the staff level. Several of my colleagues mentioned that he was a very good listener, and he was amazingly responsive in terms of getting answers to all of our questions at the Neighbors Southwest NAC, so we really appreciate Rob's engagement and leadership. Just a few recommendations moving forward after you approve this. Again, these are not amendments, but I highly encourage the city of Beaverton to build public-private partnerships moving forward. City staff should engage with Neighbors Southwest NAC and other stakeholders once these zoning amendments are adopted, and engage other stakeholders, including but not limited to Friends of Cooper Mountain who briefed our NAC. I would also really encourage, I believe there's an existing Transportation Technical Advisory Committee, really would encourage Transportation TAC to address wildlife, undercrossing, edge protection, and buffers, and two of the three items in my written testimony that I submitted yesterday, which pertain to tracking capital projects and traffic calming. Finally, last two points, the tree code example, the tree code adopted by council is a good example of what should also be included on the list of implementation items. And then finally, I recommend that public involvement continue after the plan is adopted to meet Goal one of requirement of the state to minimize any potential future Luba appeal. So again, great work on this, and I encourage council to adopt it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Jesse Burgess, and on deck, James Twilliger.
Good evening. May be the evening, councilors. I'm Jesse Burgess with Shawby, Williams, and Wyatt, representing Dave Olson, Casey Sayer, owners of property on Horse Tail Drive in Cooper Mountain Community Plan area. Our firm has submitted testimony numerous times throughout the process here, and we continue to have concerns about the resource overlay as it affects our clients. Our concerns fall into two categories. The initial concern regards how it affects the classification of the upland forest designation. The fact of the matter is, it's simply inaccurate as it affects our client's property. As we pointed out to staff numerous times, our client's property was forested, and the trees were cut down in 2019, yet it continues to affect the majority of their properties and essentially relegates most of their property undevelopably. Accordingly, we request that planning staff be directed to revise the assignment of upland forest habitat as it affects their properties. Likewise, the overbroad assumption that all streams within the Cooper Mountain Community Plan are perennial streams until proven otherwise fails to meet the substantial evidence standard and unduly passes the cost of accurate stream determinations onto property owners. We similarly request that staff be directed to limit the riparian resources that are determined within the Cooper Mountain Community Plan to be limited to those within the Clean Water Services corridors at this time. Finally, our client's property is, will be subject to the collector roads that will be located within the property. With the way that the resource overlay affects the property, only 20% of the property can be disturbed, and where the collector roads are going to be affecting them, that will also be affecting that 20%. We request that staff be directed to revise the standards of the resource overlay to not include public facilities, such as the collector roads, as part of that 20% disturbance area, or alternatively, to provide a lower level of review for the use of disturbance area when the city proposes to capture a portion of the disturbance area for its own
Thank you.
...for height. There we go. Good evening, Madam Mayor and esteemed council. My name is James Twilliger, and I'm here, an official representative from the Greenway Neighborhood Advisory Committee. I am their chair, and I'm here to support the proposed amendments in addition to the letter that we have supported into the public record. There's a quote by Aaron Sorkin, the gentleman who did West Wing and so forth, and it goes along the lines of, "We can all be better teachers." Short quote, it's one that lives rent-free in my head, and it's, to me, an instruction that says that we always need to be conscious of the messages that we are giving to the people around us, the people we serve, the people who serve us, and so forth. What I appreciate most, and what my NAC appreciates most about these amendments, is that it finally takes what is, in our estimation, the first excellent step towards trying to actually do things differently and move into the future with respect to climate change and environmental protection. The simple fact that these amendments remove the financial incentive to immediately clear all natural resources to improve immediate property value, the fact that we have eliminated that in this proposal, it's hope. It is, without any other words, it is hope. Now, we're in the Greenway NAC, which is not adjacent to this property, but we benefit from all of the many adjustments made in these amendments because we are doing the transportation system plan coming up. There will be future development in our NAC, and we want to make sure that at every turn, we are doing everything we can to not only improve what is going on around us, but let us not be bystanders as what feels like the world around us is either figuratively or even worse, literally sometimes on fire. These amendments represent hope to us, and I hope that you go forward with them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Gene Shaw, and then on deck is Howard Herman.
My name is Gene Shaw, and we have property on Cooper Mountain, on Elvord Lane, and I want to talk about the significant wildlife habitat and the hazards of having that. Yeah, and what most people might not know about deer, that they, everyone probably knows they carry Lyme disease, and, but most people don't know about chronic wasting disease. It's similar to mad cow disease, and it is definitely deadly. I'll read you something that, I have a fishing license, and I got this from the Department of Fish and Wildlife in Oregon. Chronic wasting disease is a fatal infectious disease that affects members of the cervid family, such as deer, elk, and moose. It's spread by no sinus contact between animals and through urine, feces, blood, and saliva. In addition, the disease-causing agents called prions are shed by infected animals and persist in the soil for years, potentially infecting other animals. And this is from the Colorado Department of Wildlife, and they're saying that half of Colorado's deer herds and one-third of its elk herds have animals that are known to be infected with chronic wasting disease. It's in Washington, it's in California. If you look at a map, CWD, you'll see that it's on our eastern border. It's all in the mountain states, and it's up in Canada, and it's headed our way. It's a dangerous situation. It's a health hazard to have deer in our neighborhoods, and if wherever it's, they touch noses, they urinate, wherever our pets and our children and we walk, we bring it into our houses, and it is, it can jump species, and it does. It's in sheep, it's called scapy, I believe, and road-killed deer were fed to mink farms, and all the mink died because of CWD. It's not, it's a health hazard that is a serious component to have going through our neighborhoods, not just for Cooper Mountain, but adjoining neighborhoods.
Thank you. Howard Herman, and on deck is Kim Vanderhey.
I'm Howard Herman. Gene and I own the properties, two properties on Elvord Lane. We've submitted written documentation. In the area of Elvord Lane, it appears that the application of the significant natural resource designation is somewhat arbitrary relative to the tree canopies and the wildlife habitat. There are lots with significant and obvious tree canopies and wildlife corridors with no overlay. Our lots have no tree canopies and no wildlife corridor and should not have any significant natural resource overlay. They do have some. In some cases, including ours, the SNR extends to the borders of the lots and stops short, and it's really unclear to me how the wildlife is supposed to respond to that. We've been offered no current drone photos or satellite documentation of our property. We have submitted documentation, including a drone photo, clearly demonstrating that the entirety of our properties, there's no tree canopy and no wildlife resources on it. Washington County, in response to our input, assessing our lots in terms of there being no wildlife habitat, has removed all that, all such designation. Beaverton still has some of each of our two properties assessed as significant natural resource, and we believe Beaverton should remove this designation like Washington County has done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council. Thank you for giving me three minutes to speak. I know how government works. They make a decision, and then they make the data work. I'm here to say that originally, when the Planning Commission here designated part of my property riparian, I objected. I'm on a hill. The problem is, when it rains, water runs downhill, but that doesn't make me riparian. Summer Creek is below my property, on my neighbor's property, and they have a riparian setback line, and originally, after, in that same thing, they, same plan, they designated part of my property as a trail. Why would somebody want to walk up through a subdivision to go to someplace else where there's another subdivision? Wouldn't they logically want to walk down Summer Creek to maybe the Greenway that's there on, I think it's about 160th, the Greenway Park, and then go somewhere from there? The other thing that bothers me is we took that off on the last plan, and now I have a landslide area on my property. I've owned that property for 40 years. I've been in Beaverton for over 50 within a mile of that area. We went through the 96 flood, and nothing slipped. Nothing has slipped ever there. If you're looking at problems that would be inherent with things, look at the building we're in. It's built on a swamp. In case of an earthquake, we're all going to probably die. So I guess what I'm saying is, I object to the plan. I think we need to do some more planning, especially in my area. I live at 160th, the Greenway Park, and then go somewhere from there. I live at 17207, sorry, 17207 Southwest Siler Ridge Lane. There's all sorts of things going on for this area, and I think it needs another set of eyes other than just figuring out, well, this is the big plan, we'll just do it. I think when we finally get to the area, and I'm sure you're going to approve this tonight, when we do the planning, I think it would be who the Planning Department to ask the owners, what do you think ought to happen here? I think that would be a real important designation, rather than just putting something onto us after we've lived there for 50 years, and we just have to deal with it.
Thank you. All right, we have two online testimony. There's no name, but it's phone number 503-3887-4899. All right, you've been granted permission to speak.
Mayor?
Yeah.
This is Robin McIntyre, City Attorney. For people online, especially if we can make sure that they state their name and address for the record, people who have testified in person have filled out a card that has that information, but I want to make sure that people online state their name and address.
Great, you heard the City Attorney, last 44899. You've been granted permission to speak. Are you here with us? All right, we'll move on to Zach. If you could please state your name and, name and address for the record. You have three minutes to address the council.
Hey there, my name's, can you hear me?
We can.
Good, my name's Zach Hillman. I live at 17750 Southwest Outlook Lane. In the area, thank you for the City Council and planning staff for the thoughtful and extensive work you've put into the Cooper Mountain Community Plan. It's clear that significant effort has gone into creating a framework for thoughtful growth, and I share the vision of vibrant, connected neighborhoods that support both current and future residents. That said, it's important to acknowledge the widespread disapproval of development in this area. Many residents feel the changes will disrupt the character of the community. If development is to move forward, it must do so in a way that builds trust by fostering neighborhoods with character, accessibility, and amenities that serve the community well for years to come. One area to address is the distribution of commercial zones. Currently, Hilltop and Cooper Lowlands are slated for these zones, but Siler Ridge, an area identified as highly favorable for early growth, has none. Including commercial spaces in Siler Ridge from the outset would better distribute resources across all high-density zones, ensuring equity while maintaining the square footage already planned. This isn't about adding more, it's about creating a balance. Walkability is another essential component. Walkable neighborhoods require more than extended sidewalks, they require destinations. People need grocery stores, cafes, and childcare centers within walking distance, not just within driving range. Adding commercial zones to Siler Ridge would enhance daily convenience and sustainability. It's a chance to ensure that neighborhoods feel connected and livable, and while transit is part of the plan, let's be honest, less than 6% of Beaverton residents currently use buses to commute. There aren't even covers at many bus stops to protect riders from the rain, which further deters their use. Until transit infrastructure catches up, walkability must be prioritized. Finally, I want to touch on architectural diversity. While this plan isn't specifically designed to facilitate a range of architectural styles, it's something I urge the City Council to keep in mind as it moves forward. Neighborhoods thrive when they have character. Too often, new developments result in generic housing styles that fail to inspire pride or individuality. Cooper Mountain is an opportunity to do things differently. By encouraging builders to incorporate a variety of styles, Craftsman, Victorian, Modern, Mid-Century Modern, Tudor, Mediterranean, farmhouse, and more, we can create neighborhoods that reflect the vibrancy of their residents. Perhaps a note could be made in the plan to reflect this intent and to create opportunities to incentivize architectural diversity when implementing the plan. This isn't about prescribing designs, it's about creating a place that people feel proud to call home. Cooper Mountain has enormous potential to succeed. This plan must go beyond meeting state requirements. It must inspire trust, create character, and provide accessibility. Thank you for your dedication to this project. With few strategic adjustments, this plan can achieve its full potential and serve as a model for balanced, inclusive development. Let's make Cooper Mountain a place that for all of Beaverton can be proud of and not just a convenient spot to stack density to meet quotas. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you. Okay, Council, is there any questions of anyone that gave testimony this evening? Okay. Seeing none. Do we, do any of the members have any questions for staff? Yep, we have some, if staff could come back up. Counselor Duggar, when they get ready to go?
Yeah, thank you, I have a couple of questions. What would it look like? One of the speakers spoke about the public allocation not counting towards the develop of the land. Is that a complicated change? Like, what does that look like in application?
Counselor Duggar, is this still on? Okay. I think first we'd like to just provide a brief overview of the methodology, actually just a reminder of how the overlay areas are established and what options folks have to alter them in that process. Oh, and this is Alyssa Maxwell. You can introduce yourself.
Hi, Alyssa Maxwell, Capital Planning Project Manager, and worked on natural resources on this project. So Exhibit 1A in your packet has the natural resources report, and we do have, the methodology to establish where those natural resources are is set out by Metro. So as you know, this area was brought into the UGB in 2018, and that's sort of our date that we have to use to set, to establish those natural resources boundaries. So where changes have been made since 2018, we acknowledge that the map may not match what's on the ground today, but that's because we are required to try to protect the resources that existed at that time. So that's what the mapping is based on, and so the aerial photos are based on that 2018 date. We have three types of natural resources that have been identified, as Rob mentioned, that riparian area that has really strong protections set out by Clean Water Services that includes the creeks, wetlands, and steep slopes that contribute to those areas, so that's why you see those designations. And then two types of upland habitat, areas adjacent to those waterways that provide wildlife corridors, and then areas of significant trees. So the rules that are set out, they do set a, on a particular property, you can disturb 20% of that overlay for development. So it's not 20% of your property, it's 20% of the overlay. So if a property has half of it as overlay, that half that's uncovered by the overlay is fully developable plus an additional 20% of the resource overlay. We do require some mitigation planting. And then the rules do have some options for an alternative mitigation strategy. So if developments would like to come in and with a different proposal, maybe they want to more, further evaluate the habitat functions of that resource and propose a different way to enhance it, I think that alternative mitigation strategy is an option for these properties that may have more complexity that can't be just met by that, like 80/20 rule.
Thank you. And then one more question, and I think I might have heard the answer in what you just said, but for the SNRI's, it sounds like there was some misalignment with what Washington County has designated. Have we thought about maybe aligning? Because that's really, that seems like a barrier to me when one government says something and then another government says something else. Is there, is that because of the 2018 date, and is there any mechanism to align post that?
Sure, so yeah, there are, some of it is that 2018 date, whereas Washington County just updated their resource mapping based on, like, last year's information, and they were doing, they were doing some property-by-property evaluations, so that is why you see some little, small areas of misalignment. We did share data where it was, you know, applicable through the process. The other thing that our resource rules do acknowledge is that individual properties are going to have better information when they come in for a development application. So just like anywhere in the city that someone wants to develop, if you have a creek or a stream or a wetland, you have to verify those boundaries and confirm those with the state. Properties in Cooper Mountain are still going to need to do that, and at that time, if the resource is in a different area than where we saw it based on the aerial photo, there is a process for them to shift the boundary based on what's actually on the ground. We just didn't do that property-by-property review for this version of the plan.
I see, thank you.
I would also add, Counselor, that there won't be confusion about the two maps because for development to actually occur, they're going to have to annex them to the city, and just the city rules will apply at that point.
Cool, thank you, I don't have further questions.
Counselor Teeter?
Yeah, thank you all. I really appreciated a memo received from you all and Andy regarding the Collector Street that we are not proposing, that crosses over, over the creek between Grabhorn and Cooper Lowlands, or the southwest corner. Can you all talk more about the differences we have with Washington County? And I feel good about our approach, but I would love to hear from you all if there's any other details we want to add.
I'd like to know more about your question, Counselor Teeter, because the, I mean, the main difference is the, you know, whether there's a line on the map for the Collector. So do you have a specific thing that you were interested in?
So I know the county has a difference of opinion on what we're doing. I feel comfortable with what we're doing because of our, we wanted to preserve the natural habitat there, we're providing a multimodal way to get through. Is there any cause for concern that staff has that is not reflected in what we're proposing here?
Nothing that I can think of, Counselor. The real, the real work will be when development occurs, making sure we're all working together to get those safe connections to Grabhorn and making sure people can access that, that road safely and get to where they need to go. And that's work that staff's committed to do, and we're confident that those solutions can be found.
Okay, thank you.
Just kind of following up on Counselor Teeter's question, doesn't a road like this exist in River Terrace and Tigard? Wasn't there a similar issue with a road that attached to a county road in the city of Tigard, didn't it change it?
There was an issue in the city of Tigard, but I can't speak to the details of that project.
Counselor Hussin?
I guess I'll just tack on to that because I want to close that out, and then I'll share my other comments. It sounds like the county has some concerns. Is there any compromise? Is there anything that could be done to make space for what the county is bringing up?
You know, the proposed amendments have, were based on the council direction and the desire to preserve the natural resources while still allowing pedestrian and bike connections to that area. Again, I think the real, assuming that remains, the real implementation piece is working together to make sure we find a way to get that, the intersections figured out using a roundabout or some other engineering solution to make sure people can get out, turn left, turn right, and get where they need to go on that street. We have our Assistant Transportation Engineer here if you have, like, specific questions about, about that, but I think it's more of an implementation conversation going forward. You know, it's, I can't think of a, I can't think of a, between road and no road, I can't think of a...
Half a road?
Let's just call up the Assistant Traffic Engineer. I mean, I know you're trying to real hard play in the transportation role, but let's get the expert up here to...
I'm gonna favor that.
So I think what the council is searching for is, you know, this was our direction, we want a slimmer road, we want to protect natural resources. The county chair is here very late on an evening to express the concern of the county. Is there, you know, I mean, I would love a roundabout, is that a possibility? Or are there other things we should consider when we're making this decision tonight?
Yes, so a roundabout would be a possibility here. Unlike a traffic signal, which was mentioned by the county, those require specific warrants before they can be installed. So we know there's a set volume that we need to see on these streets before we're going to install a traffic signal. That same criteria does not exist for a roundabout, so there are not the specific criteria that we have to meet to be able to install that. It comes down to design and feasibility and construction for a roundabout, and whether or not that can be achieved within the available space.
I'm going to just share my comments, and then we can come back to that because I want to get from others. I mean, you know, I want to just take a moment and honor everyone who's given testimony. You know, I have been on this council for four years now, and I have watched staff work diligently and just, at so many levels, engaging with community, engaging with staff, engaging with so many members. And so everything that I see here, I don't feel surprised. I feel really proud of this work, I feel really excited about this work, I want to wholeheartedly support it. I want to honor that folks feel, obviously, some concern around development, what's going to happen to this area, but, but we do, we need, we need housing, and we need homes, and we want to build those homes, and we have that opportunity. So I wholeheartedly support really everything that's in this proposal. I was trying to help kind of figure out, you know, what, I know we can't build half a road, so, you know, what compromise is there, if any? On that note, I fully support everything that staff has done. I've had the privilege and honor to watch this from the beginning and see such extensive community engagement and community outreach. It's just, if we're going to suggest changes or revisions, I just want to make sure we're working, you know, not just as a team, but with staff to make sure the implications of any of those kinds of changes would be realistic for this area, so, thank you.
Well, thank you. Any other questions for staff? Oh, sorry, Counselor Kimmy?
Yeah, I mean, I would have loved to get the clear answer, but it seems like there's none today. But if we pass the ordinance today, does that prevent us from working with the Washington County and what they want us to see, or not? Does it give us room to work later on? Or my other question is, why wasn't this worked out prior to today?
Well, I'm, I'm, can we work on it later? Kind of depends on what you mean by work on it later. I mean, the council always has the, the option to approve something different later on. You know, if, right now, there's no Collector on the map, you know, if the council wants to revisit that at a later time, that can happen. Although that would be, we would need, we would need time to, you know, kind of work on that, create new findings, and redo all the maps and things like that. I think the work, assuming it's approved tonight, the first job going forward is just tracking development in that area and making sure as development is going to happen, we operate on design solutions that are going to, going to be work for people who are using the roads. And we'll continue to work with, with Washington County on the whole plan area with regards to transportation, because they'll, they'll still retain jurisdiction over arterials like Grabhorn and 175th. Okay, thanks.
I think what I'm hearing from the council is that we have a general approval for the road construction now with understanding that there's concern from the county, but it seems like we have some possible future working solutions, and so I think just asking to keep the council updated on that, and like, wherever possible, if we could build a roundabout instead of a stoplight, like, that would be, just hear me out here, something we should be doing more of. So if we could do that up there, that would be really awesome. Is there any more questions from the council this evening? Okay, seeing none. I do want to ask the City Attorney, the options in, on page 12, does Option 1 include the recommendations from the Planning Commission, or would we need to add that separately?
No, that would be to approve the Planning Commission's recommendation. So the ordinance as presented to you includes the Planning Commission's recommendation.
All right, do we have a motion?
I'll make one, Mayor.
Okay.
I move to adopt the city ordinance embodied in Agenda Bill 24155 and ordinance amending the comprehensive plan zoning map and ordinance number 2050, the Beaverton Development Code LU42024-00682, Cooper Mountain Community Plan.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded by Counselor Teeter. Any more discussion on tonight's motion? All right, seeing none. Can the recorder please call the roll?
Councillor Duggar?
Yes.
Councillor Hassan?
Yes.
Councillor Kimmy?
Yes.
Councillor Teeter?
Yes.
Councillor Tivnan?
Yes.
Mayor Beatty?
Yes.
Six yes.
All right. Thank you, city council. Thank you, colleagues. Tonight represents a monumental accomplishment from staff in the amount of work that you guys have done on this plan. I know we have joked many, many times that we have seen the both of you, probably 400 times in the last two years, but maybe sometime we should count it up, because I think you have presented more to city council than any other staff member in the building. So thank you for working through this with council and our many updates along the way and our many questions, understanding that we are not experts in planning. We are just the community's voice at the dais and really taking the time it needed for us to get here. So I hope whatever happens tomorrow, the city manager should buy you donuts, because it is a big day, and donuts are the way we celebrate in the city of Beaverton. Thank you. All right. We are on to our last work session this evening, Agenda Bill 24156. It's the city of Beaverton Boards and Commission assessments. I do believe the city manager is going to introduce our consultants this evening.
Yes. Thank you, mayor. I just wanted to set a little bit of context before we go into the presentation tonight. As council may recall, as part of the 2023 annual goal setting workshop, you directed a commission assessment, really to look at best practices and process improvements, ranging from recruitment to staff capacity building. So tonight, you're going to hear from Nancy Hetrick, Vice President of Raftellus Consulting. She'll be sharing the firm's findings and recommendations with you with respect to how to enhance the board and commissions processes and activities. In your packet, you have two presentations. One reflects five policy considerations to help guide your conversation this evening. And then there's a draft roadmap that really outlines a 12 to 18-month timeline for implementation. However, that's really contingent upon your feedback this evening. The second presentation, of course, is Raftellus's slide deck, and Nancy Hetrick will go ahead and now present that to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jenny. Mayor Beatty, councillors, it's nice to be here. Nancy Hetrick, Vice President with Raftellus. I served as a project director for this review of your boards and commissions. I was joined by a terrific team, and I'm here representing the work of the group to you this evening. I'm here to provide the highlights. So I will go ahead. I think I have the ability to share my screen. Let's just make sure that that is what happens here. Okay. Does that work? Does everybody see that now? I will hope that that's a yes. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and take us through our presentation. So I'm going to provide a little bit of background and overview of the work that we accomplished and how we got to our recommendations, which I'll present to you through the observations and recommendations portions of this presentation. Then, of course, we will conclude with your questions and discussion. All right. So project overview, to give you a little bit of a sense of the work that we did. So we had several objectives in mind as we initiated this work. And really, at the highest level, our focus was in identifying opportunities to streamline and strengthen the impact of your advisory bodies, recognizing the commitment that the city of Beaverton has to engagement and the involvement of your boards and commissions in the work that is done. There was really a focus and a priority intending to ensure that was effective and impactful and meaningful for participants. So several objectives in particular, we're looking again for opportunities to streamline and strengthen, but also to look at the structure and composition of your bodies, to review the process and the experience of participants through the recruitment and application process, and also to look at the support that's necessary and how it is working for the support of these bodies. The scope of our work involved a significant amount of engagement and learning early on. And so at the beginning of our engagement, we met with city leadership to understand really what was driving the interest of the project and what we were trying to accomplish. We then conducted 23 individual interviews, including members of the elected body as well as city leaders and staff liaisons. And so we could really hear and understand the unique perspectives that each of you provide. In addition, we held a series of focus groups with representatives of each of the boards and commissions that we were looking at. So there were 18 participants in total, expressing their experience and sharing with us the stories of their participation on boards and commissions. We were also provided with a whole host of background resources and documents that we reviewed and analyzed. Thank you to city staff for their support in providing those resources. We also looked at best practices and looked to see how neighboring and comparable organizations, jurisdictions in Oregon were utilizing boards and commissions to see, just as a point of comparison, what that would look like compared to Beaverton. Finally, we prepared the draft report that we then shared with staff, city staff, to make sure that we were factually accurate and weren't missing anything significant, finalized the report, and we are here today to present the highlights of those with you. So some of the key themes through the engagement activities that we hosted and conducted, including our interviews and focus groups, first was really the identification of a need to clarify the role and purpose of some boards and commissions. Over time, boards and commissions evolve and shape and morph a little bit, and there is some areas where there's a lack of clarity. And so we'll talk more about that as we go through the presentation this evening. There's also a real desire for members of the boards and commissions to see the impact of their work. They want to know that it's meaningful and that there is a result of their efforts so that they know that their work matters. And getting feedback from council is something that they would really like to see increasingly more of. The form of government changes remain, even after all these years, to be unclear for some. You know, there are folks who have been involved with the boards and commissions for many years, and there have been significant cultural changes within the city. And for some, that is still challenging and unclear. And so there's some opportunity to continue to focus in that area. And again, the desire for that interaction with the mayor and city council in terms of feedback, and also just ensuring that the focus of their work and the effort is aligned and impactful to the city's business. Lastly, there's a continued desire to improve member diversity and provide opportunities for new members. So bringing in new voices to the table and making sure that there are new opportunities, fresh opportunities for people who have not previously participated in boards and commissions to become involved. Some of the themes from our peer comparisons, and I'll provide a couple slides with a little bit more detail on who we compared with and what the results were, but here were some of the themes that stood out to us. First of all, we found through public information that is available, so this is what we were able to learn and glean online, was that it seems that the central support that is being provided to boards and commissioners in Beaverton is unique. It's not something found in the peer jurisdictions where the role and the support really comes through the city recorder or sometimes the manager's office. So that's a unique and special attribute of the city of Beaverton. We found that Beaverton has a greater number of boards and commissions and a larger average size than the peer average. And so that greater involvement perhaps is a reflection of the desire to engage with the community. But there are certainly implications with having the broader body sizes. Staff liaisons are a feature of boards and commissions that are not universally found across the country. We are a national firm and do this work in many places, and it's not something that is consistently found. However, we did find that the role of a council liaison is something that is occasionally found in the state of Oregon, however, not to the degree or the volume as we see in Beaverton. Only Tigard was, I think, the other city who had a significant number of council liaisons. Over the last year, you have altered the alter. You've changed the number and the use of alternates for boards and commissions, and so that has declined the numbers overall. But the use of alternates is still something that is at a higher rate utilized in Beaverton when compared to peers. And term limits is something that we heard about as an opportunity in Beaverton through our interviews, and we found that that is a frequently used tool for changing the composition of boards in the peer jurisdictions, but not currently in Beaverton. Some peer cities set boundaries on the types of bodies that they have and expect a level of public participation, including who they are advising. And we'll talk some more about the types of bodies and how they can be defined and utilized really to maximize their effect. So staying on the topic of the peer comparison, I have two slides with a lot of data, and I apologize for so much information on a slide. But over there to the left, you can see the peer jurisdictions that we researched and we learned from in terms of their use of boards and commissions in their government businesses. And we did some comparison. We did some averages. And so here you can see the number of boards and commissions in Beaverton is slightly higher than the peer average, as well as, let's see, as well as the number of resources in the city are lower. So you have fewer elected officials and fewer population, but you have a higher degree of participation on boards and commissions. With respect to the administration of these boards and commissions, we found that the average board size in Beaverton is higher than the peer average, and the range varies a little bit, but skews again on the higher side slightly. So we'll look at that a little bit more. But also, in terms of some of the tools and the methods you use to help to support and engage with your commissions, including term limits, alternates, and staff liaison, we find that Beaverton is unique in some of these areas. I mentioned previously that with respect to term limits, you know, Beaverton has term limits for some specific boards, but the peer average is that it's a majority of those that utilize that. Gresham was the only city of the peers that did not apply term limits. Use of alternates, again, a majority of Beaverton boards and commissions have some form of alternate available to them. These are non-voting members. They are invited to participate and join in the meetings, but don't have an active role. They're there as an alternate. The peer average, it says none. Only Tigard has a majority of boards and commissions that uses alternates. Medford and Salem each have one. The balance of them have none. And again, for the staff liaisons, you can see that Beaverton, actually, it's eight. It's not all. That's a correction that we made subsequent to this preparation of this document. So they're more highly used in Beaverton. Some additional key themes we found from the comparison, we were looking specifically at the composition and the mix of boards and commissions that are available in Beaverton as well as the peers. The use of DEI and human rights, these are kind of categorical topics. So six of the nine peer cities have a single border commission that combines to address these areas of responsibility. Beaverton, of course, has two. That's ATRAC and DAB. For transportation, eight of the nine peer cities have a broader transportation or multimodal committee that incorporates all elements of transportation. In Beaverton, you have two, the Traffic Commission and a separate Bicycle Advisory Committee that's focused exclusively in the area of bicycle opportunities. For climate, three of the nine peer cities have reframed climate initiatives into broader environmental boards, like Environment and Climate Committee or the Climate Action Policy Advisory Board. And so the reframing of the current task force may have some opportunity for reframing and new life, looking to the future. For land use engagement, six peers assigned their planning commission to serve the role of the resident involvement requirements for land use. In Beaverton, as you know, you have a separate body that serves that purpose. The BCCI represents all of the neighborhoods and really serves as that voice for involvement in land use. For planning decisions, only Beaverton and Tigard have streamlined planning-related functions through a single planning commission. Other bodies actually have additional boards or commissions that are specific to different elements of the planning function. And so in that case, you have fewer. So I'm going to now take us through our observex. I'll try to do this at a relatively quick clip in the interest of time, but I want to make sure I can hit the high points. Some of them are more ministerial. Some of them are policy decisions that the council will want to consider, but I'll walk us through these. And so in the order that we have them in the report, the first is to clarify and communicate the purpose of the boards and commissions to inform and support the work of the city. So the city invests a lot of staff time and resources in helping to facilitate the creation and the use of these boards and commissions, and they serve a really important role and voice in the process. But I think that it's really critical that there's that alignment and that understanding in terms of the council priorities and the work of the city, and how and in what way the boards and committees relate to that, align to that work. And so communicating that process and having clarity of purpose will go a long way with helping people understand what they're signing up for and how they contribute and have impact to the work of the city. Let's see. The next recommendation is to better define some of those boards and commissions. And so the clarity of the overarching role of the boards and commissions then filters into the various types. There are advisory bodies, and there are decision-making bodies. Some of those are mandated and have specific requirements as to the work that they are authorized to do. But having some greater definition within these bodies would also provide greater clarity for those who are signing up or interested in getting involved. So you'd want to clarify, for example, the difference between a commission aboard a committee, a task force. And so those things are currently a little bit murky and can be cleaned up for future use. These are just some examples from other cities that we looked at in terms of how they define that. And so it's a resource, and it's something that as any kind of refinement occurs, there are great examples out there. We like to find and track and utilize those great examples that are provided. And so I won't read through all of these to you this evening, but you can see there's great distinction and definition that can be provided in a simple way that allows for greater transparency and expectation. Some of these, including the use of steering committees or ad hoc committees and operational work groups, both of those on the right-hand side column, help to define when you establish a body that is intended with a specific and temporary purpose. And this is important to do at the start of a new group, when those are created, so that there are expectations around the work plan and the timeframe for getting our work accomplished. Of course, all of these recommendations and changes will lead to some basic updates that will be needed. And this includes to the city council rules and municipal code. And so I will not bog down in the chapters and the codes and the details. This is all in the report that we've provided. But of course, to affect the change and make them real, you have to amend some of these documents. This year, the city initiated a new program, a new approach for the boards and commissions that asked them to create an annual work plan. The annual work plans were intended to show the alignment and contribution to the council's goals and priorities, but also to provide clarity around the work that would be accomplished in the coming year. This was a brand-new initiative, and it was a big lift, and certainly a big change for many of the boards and commissions. But we believe that it's absolutely a great best practice that once there is time to acclimate and really fine-tune the tools and the practices within it, it will serve those participating on the boards and commissions, but also the council and staff with greater clarity and transparency around the work that's being accomplished, and the opportunity to celebrate the accomplishments and the work that these bodies are contributing. And so the goal of having impact and meaningful results can be realized through the use of these work plans. So we applaud and encourage that continued work. Strengthening the feedback loop. One thing that we heard, you know, quite clearly from the participants in the focus groups, those members from the boards and commissions, was a significant and notable desire for feedback with council. um a significant um and notable desire for feedback with council. Um so we have the council liaison role, uh and that has um been a, a connective fiber between boards and commissions and council over the years. Um but it's not, it's not necessarily um consistent nor well-defined. Uh and there are, there are different degrees of use for that. Counselors that are assigned to boards and commissions represent their, themselves when they're going, they're not speaking necessarily on behalf of the council as a full body, but as a, as a resource and a set of ears uh to, to listen, but also are providing updates directly um on things that have been transpiring during council meetings, things that are public record uh and certainly could be um observed directly by members of the community as well as boards and commission members. Uh so this, this is an, an area where we think that uh there may be greater impact, better use of counselor time as well to provide a, a way for direct interaction with the full city council in lieu of the use of council liaisons. Uh so staff, you know, agendizing items when there are major updates to work plan items through the boards and commissions or needs for regular exchange, these can be scheduled and agendized uh for council. That way there is the benefit of the full council hearing the presentation, having an opportunity to respond or provide feedback um and cleaning up some of the, the inconsistency among the feedback loop that we heard. Um so the, the tools and the resources that the, the team, the staff team that supports the boards and commissions have created are terrific. Uh members really appreciate the onboarding process and the tools that are available, uh but there's really opportunity to build on that. Uh and not build on that with um greater volume, because there's, it's very thorough, um lots of terrific information. Uh but sometimes when there's a lot of information, uh and maybe not a lack of, a lack of um either initiative or uh intention in, in going through all that, things can be missed. And so having opportunities for quick definitions, a quick guide for what the different bodies uh do, uh how they serve, what, what is involved, uh that at a glance, those who are interested in becoming involved could, could review, familiarize themselves would be, would be beneficial. Also, before individuals um apply for a, a role in a board or commission or apply uh to be a member, uh they should strongly be encouraged to attend meetings and to speak to other members of those bodies to understand the work that they do, um the mission that they are serving, uh the work plan that they are addressing. Uh these are areas that would help to strengthen that transition and onboarding process uh and also um minimize um potential letdown if the work that is being done is different from what they have assumed. Also a part of this, one of the areas we heard about from uh some of the participants, the mem- the board members was that there are sometimes, they can be frustrated by the inability to address situations where they have a member who is perhaps singularly focused on a topic that may or may not be part of their work plan or that are um, are, are not cohesive in the group. And so finding ways to formalize a process to address inappropriate or difficult members. Uh and this is not accusation, not, you know, being an accusation, but there are, you know, opportunities to present processes to help support board members in making sure that these bodies are, are supported and effective. Uh I believe this is underway. This is um the recommendation to invest in some board and commission management software. Currently, uh there's missed opportunity by the lack of technology. Uh manual tracking processes are labor-intensive and they also miss the opportunity to track people over time, their interests. Uh when someone has applied, perhaps hasn't been appointed, but they might want to be, might be interested in other areas. Uh there are, you know, uh great software tools that are available at low cost to, to help to improve and streamline the management of these processes. And so my understanding is that this is something that is underway or, or, or envisioned. Um it should be a great improvement to how staff is able to manage this group of, of individuals. Uh the recruitment and adjusting timelines uh are another area that we heard about in terms of um the, you, the member experience. Uh it's, it's a lot, you know, when you have fifteen um advisory bodies, advisory and loosely defined um serving, you know, that are, are going through an application process uh in the fall annually, that's, those are a lot of individuals. Um and the time period to work through that is compressed. Um schedules are busy. The mayor uh interviews each of the candidates, which is very much appreciated, by the way. Um in terms of those who are going through the process, they real, they appreciate that, that um special touch, but it provides, you know, limited opportunity for, you know, here's the date, we can do your interview. Uh just because schedules are so tight and there are so many people to get through. And so uh that's challenging. Um also, the timing, members are appointed in December, uh service formally begins in January, uh but the orientation process that is required uh can take in January, February and sometimes into March. And so there's lost opportunity and people aren't up to speed as quickly as they might otherwise be. Uh and some of this may be, you know, the ability to understand and, you know, preview the work of bodies ahead of the application process. Um but, but longer review period could support the bandwidth and move training earlier in the year so that people are better equipped to do the work. The other area that we heard, um again, supporting this idea of bringing more people uh into the process with opportunity to participate uh and engage on these important uh topic areas is to implement the use of term limits. And so this is an area that we saw many of the peer jurisdictions already have in place. Uh so it's not an unusual or departure from, you know, kind of the norm, if you will, for others. And so we have a recommendation to implement term, term limits for all boards and commissions that also requires applicants to, to re-interview. Uh but also to allow, you know, in some cases, there's need for exceptions. So allow the mayor to recommend special exceptions to term limits to the city council uh when there are difficulties filling positions or technical or professional um requirements for, for different members. And so there are maybe some uh extenuating circumstances to be considered. Uh three consecutive terms and two-year break before reapplying to the same board or commission would be in line with most of the peer cities. Um and of course, re-interviewing gives city flexibility in terms of the, the mix of participants. Almost done. Um also, uh scaling back, the average number of, of members of the boards and commissions will facilitate greater and meaningful engagement uh and more focused work. Uh we know that when, when we're working in committee or working in large group, uh it can be challenging to, to get, to get the work done, uh or you have been to keen-beans schedules and make it work. Uh sometimes having a, a smaller focus group uh allows for uh greater, greater time, attention and meaningful participation. So in lieu of recruiting alternates, uh which is a current practice for many of these bodies, uh referring unselected applicants to different boards and commissions um may be an opportunity to, to keep them connected and engaged. Also encouraging those who are interested in being involved in the public process to attend public meetings um and also to participate in any number of other community engagement activities. The boards and commissions are one important avenue and um and tool for engaging the community, but it's by no means the, the only method that's available. And so finding a way to um over time, you know, strengthen or tighten up the number of, of boards and commissions will uh improve the, the support requirements from staff, the time it takes to interview uh for hire and also the effectiveness on those bodies. So there were um two areas. Our, our assignment was not to look at yeah, the, the realignment or the composition of your, your boards and commissions, but there were a couple areas in particular where there are extenuating circumstances that had us look more closely at opportunities for um reimagining some of the work. Uh and the first is with DAB and ATRAC. Um to pause the recruitment in twenty twenty-four, uh as the city is looking to create its equity framework, a lot of work is underway to really rethink how this work is accomplished in the city, both for the organization and also within the work engaging with the community. And so we're recommending that there is a pause to allow that work to happen, maybe engaging with those participants in, in some of that work as the framework is being developed. Uh and then reimagining what's gonna be the best service to the community and to the organization in terms of a board or commission. Um so we have two recommendations that relate to this. One is just pausing the recruitment while the city develops its equity and inclusion strategic framework. So again, giving space for that to occur. Uh and then creating a reimagined diversity, equity and inclusion board um to be decided in terms of name that serves as an advisory body to the city council and supports the work of the office of the equity. Uh and so within that strategic framework, making sure that uh it's focused and really impactful, uh it's important work um within the city. And then the second area uh relates to the climate action task force. Uh so to pause the twenty twenty-four uh climate action task force recruitment uh and identify next steps. And so there are uh a number of options that are available to how to, you know, how to engage this group um and focus on climate. Uh a task force again is intended typically as a short-term assignment, but we know that there may be a desire for long-term focus on these efforts. Uh this pause allows for um re, reimagining and rethinking what, what that might look like. So some options for a focused advisory board to city council uh could be a focused advisory body to the council. It could be integrating climate action lens to all city boards and commissions, perhaps like the um work of the D E I N B work. Uh or sunsetting the climate action task force when the, the Beaverton Action Plan two-point-O is adopted. And in the meantime, utilizing that group to make recommendations on what a new advisory body might look. And so as with the last, we think there may be some opportunity to engage those who are currently involved, but to take a, take a pause and imagine, you know, what, what's required in a, in a look-ahead way. What's gonna support the goals uh and priorities of the council and the work of the city in the most effective and productive way. Again, making sure that the the contributions of your boards and commission members uh are really leveraged and, and appreciated. So with that, that concludes my presentation of the highlights of our, of our work. Um I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. And again, I will, I will unshare my screen and answer your questions.
Uh awesome. I will hear for some of the counselors, but I do, I just want to make kind of one point that you made up multiple times was term limits. And I, I have basically enacted term limits as the mayor. Um and when staff are recommending somebody that served more than two terms, they have to submit a reason why to me as I consider an appointment of that second person. Um I am generally in favor of term limits. I think that what I have, uh the lesson I've learned as the mayor of the last four years is the importance of consistency on the budget committee and planning. And by proxy, traffic commission. Those three boards that are decision-making boards. Having a lot of turnover has been very hectic, and so I've been a lot more lenient in the reappointment of those boards versus other boards. Um but it's just something for us to consider. The amount of time it takes to learn how to be a planning commissioner and replacing them every couple of years is incredibly staff-intensive. Let's see, I'm sorry, I've lost my track a little bit here. Counselor Tivnan, I think you're the, nope, uh Counselor Hussin.
Hello. Uh thank you for this presentation. Um I have a lot of opinions on this one, so bear with me, friends. Uh I've gotten sort of the most opportunity, I think-ish, to interact with our boards and commissions and have also um liaised on almost every single one except one that meets during the day. So it's the one I haven't had a chance to talk with. Um I, I just, um I want to take a moment and just honor all the community and the volunteers, like the folks that sign up to do this work, like it is a lot of work, um and they're volunteering. And so for some folks, I think, uh I had some folks reach out, you know, when they saw the agenda, like, well, what's this about? And, you know, we worked so hard, right? And so I just, I want to take a moment and honor that, that that a lot of folks in the last few years joined us at a time of our own transition when we were figuring out what we wanted to do and that we were running for office for the things that we wanted to get done. And some of these folks were coming with their own hopes and dreams for what they wanted to get done, which, you know, on a board and commission is is, is, is a tall order. Um so there's a lot of perspectives and experiences that, you know, that we've been hearing. Um I think, I'm just like some general policy decisions, like I agree, I think a reduction in size is not unreasonable. Um I think term limits, you know, I think of our term limits, which is three-year, you know, three terms, so that sort of makes sense to me, but I'm open to kind of what your thoughts are. I support the no alternates. I think the alternate thing actually confuses some of the folks that I sit on in boards and commissions, because they, they tend to, they seem to be confused about it. Um the one place that I get the most um stuck and lost is kind of the, the combination of the diversity advisory board and the human rights advisory commission. You know, as a, as a woman of color, I think that diversity work is, is a little bit different than human rights work. Um and I understand that we haven't given really great direction to those two boards and those bodies, but I don't know that combining them is the answer. And I know that we're not at that decision. This is a work session. The purpose of this is to have a discussion. But in light of the recent administration that's gonna be joining us in twenty twenty-five, like now more than ever, we need to hold on to community folks and groups in our communities that need support and that need to have access to us. So I think maybe in a different time, I would have said, yeah, it makes sense. There are similar um values. You know, when I think of human rights, I think of communities dealing with aging, I think of mental health, I think of reproductive rights, I think of a lot of other, you know, right to housing or right to, rights to food, rights to just, you know, be in existence. Um our diversity advisory board is unique. I think that in some ways, we're innovative as a city, because we went a, a second step and said, we have this really large community. Um I will say, I think our diversity advisory board is very heavy in the immigrant refugee community, which I think has been crucial for us to building a welcoming city and making sure feel, folks feel welcome. So I think, I, I just, like, I have some concerns around the, I think it's fine to pause, you know, and I think it's fine to continue to assess. I do not think that we should put these two groups together in the sense that I want to be thoughtful that uh the lived experience of some of our diversity advisory board members is gonna be vastly different than some of the lived experiences of our human rights commissioners. Um I also think that one of the things we need to start grappling with is how do boards and commission members have access to us? What does that look like? Because uh you know, and I'll, uh I was sharing with Counselor Duggar uh right before this, this meeting started, I was invited to a convening to talk about um immigrant defense, defense, it's called the immigrants' defense convening. Um the whole idea is how are we preparing for twenty twenty-five, right? Which is that there could be mass deportations, there could be some sorts of things that we can anticipate. And so how are we ensuring that our members um have direct access to us? And having served on most of the boards and commissions, I do think that our diversity advisory board members are on the, the most on the front lines with communities who are scared, who maybe once walked into city hall and, and no longer feel safe to do so. So I just, I want to encourage us to think about how do we create that feedback loop that Nancy talked about for these groups, especially like next year? Like if I could dream, like I would want the diversity advisory board members to, to be able to sit here with us and talk to us about like what, what's going on in their communities so that we can hear it directly. I think there's a lot to be said there. I have ma- a mass respect for the equity work that our staff is doing. I still think there, there's a bit of a removal of that lived experience, especially I would say from like the immigrant communities, our refugee communities, and then our LGBT key communities. Um the other thing that I just, and I said this to folks, you know, and I'll leave it with you all is are these boards advisory to us or are these bo- boards advisory to city staff? And I think that creates that confusion of if they're advisory to city staff, but they don't like maybe what happens via city staff, can they come to us? And what does that look like? So what is like true engagement for these individuals who are volunteering their time look like? And just really being thoughtful about, you know, is it possible for us to take on like quarterly connects with some of these bodies that are doing this work? Um and I think my sensitivity right now, especially with the incoming administration, is really focused on the diversity advisory board um and the human rights advisory commission. I'm gonna pull up the questions really quick just to make sure I'm not missing anything. Um I think supporting the development of the board and the commission rules, um engaging with the subcommittee to provide guidance and policy recommendations, I think that's all on the right track. We obviously need to update a lot of municipal co- code um to, to provide clarity. We obviously need to update a lot of municipal code code um to, to provide clarity. Um, I think to Mayor's point, like, you know, planning commission, traffic commission, budget. I, I would add arts commission to that. Those are more decision-making bodies, like they, they have some meat there. And we should allow that and then identify who is advisory to us and who isn't. Um, I will pause because I know I've taken a lot of time to say some stuff, but I just, I do want to take a moment. I think if we were looking at a different incoming administration, my comments would be different. Um, I do have to talk with folks who are very scared. Um, and sometimes myself included to, you know, to exist in this city. Just as, you know, who I am and who others are, and I want to be thoughtful of making sure we have continued increased pathways to access us and get support versus decreasing those pathways. Thanks.
Counselor Tivnan.
Thank you. Um, could you put the questions back up? Is that possible to get those back on the screen? Just ease of use. Um, but I, I can get started in the meantime. I agree with Counselor Hussin about um the, the scopes and direction provided to the Human Rights Advisory Committee as well as the DAB, um, Diversity Advisory Board. Uh, it seemed different enough that to combine them would dilute focus to a place where it might be difficult for a body to be able to coalesce around the, the smaller sub issues that the boards and commissions tend to take on throughout the year. They form subcommittees, they track things. Um, I'm serving on the bicycle advisory committee right now and they go out and they do bicycle counts. And that's a body of work that they do. They all band together to do it. There's a shared interest and a shared level of understanding around, uh, around the scope of why it's needed. And that's why they're able to do things like that is because there's, there's enough shared commonality. And um, it seems like the issues that each of those bodies are tackling just can't, maybe not always neatly fit into different buckets, but um can be used to address different things. So I, I agree on that front. Uh, Nancy, were you wanting to say something?
Oh, I was just gonna just uh offer a clarification. I appreciate the conversation that um, the, the recommendation isn't necessarily to combine them. Um, the recommendation is to, to pause as the work that is being done through the Equity Office um around that kind of strategic framework occurs, to make sure that the unique needs, which, you know, I think all can agree are there, uh, are best addressed. And so that may or may not be a combination. Um, but there is um, you know, certainly some alignment and some opportunity within those two areas to support the, the general equity objectives, I think, of the city. So.
Okay.
Offer that. That's all.
Thank you for that clarification. And it says, it absolutely to further definition for them. I've had the opportunity to serve on both. Um, I've seen them do great work. I've seen them both be very persuasive and impactful in the community. But I've also sensed frustration of what exactly are we doing here? And just wanting a little bit more um guidance and clarification on, on roles and responsibilities. Um, moving on from that though, uh, as it relates to the council liaison position. I have served on many of them so far and have greatly appreciated the opportunity to do so in the setting of having a, a, almost like a one-on-one time, not because I use it for any particular aim, but because it gives me a bird's eye view into the, the form and function of each of the commissions. It, it just illuminates my understanding of, of their function in a way that I don't think can come across in a large formatted group setting. That being said, um, I, I, it's, it's a lift uh to go every single month. Um, some years I have been much better at it. This last year, there's just been a lot of conflicts that have had me um missing my mind. I think I've missed it four times, three or four times this year. Which is a very unfortunate, um, and hopefully it won't be repeated going forward. But that being said, I go into those meetings and I talk for five to 10 minutes and then I don't talk for an hour and a half, two hours. And a lot of times the conversation around issues that aren't, aren't going to inform um information I give back to council. Uh, they're all like in process, in motion. So I, I think it has to change and we've talked about maybe having it be like on a quarterly basis. Or, or on twice yearly or something to where a counselor could go in, a meeting could get um m- more space on the agenda to have a more meaningful interaction of with the advisory committee, giving them an update on what council's been working on, getting questions and feedback from them. But having it be a formalized process where it's in front of the entire council. I'm struggling to really understand exactly what we would want to achieve out of that. I know we, we could probably dream something up. I'm worried about the time as associated with that and also diminishing returns when we already interface with them through their annual report each year and provide guidance for the following year. So that's just my two cents on that is um, I really a- appreciate having that kind of meaningful interaction on a counselor basis. And I appreciate the rotating nature of it to allow me to have that kind of access across the different boards and commissions. Having started on it, uh, a commission, on the arts commission before I joined the council, I really appreciated having that counselor come in and get to know them on a personal level as well. Um, it just, it provides for something that feels more intimate than um a more formal public setting. So uh, no, no issues with the term limits. I think twelve years sounds like a very long time. Um, to have it mirror ours, but I, I would be interested in seeing what's, different scenarios for that could look like. Um, and I think that's, that's about all I've got.
Thanks. Counselor Duggar.
Uh, thank you. Uh, this is incredibly critical work. Um, because this is impactful for some of the most impactful people here in Beaverton. Decisions are made by folks who show up right. This is also, that's why it was one of my highest priorities to have this conversation. Um, a couple of questions, Nancy, before I give my comments. Um, one of the things I struggle with is, is the annual nature of some of the work, right? We, we recruit in, in some of the boards, the 10 years longer. But have we thought about like, or have you seen operating plans where we actually break down? These are some things we can accomplish this year, but there's also maybe a multi, multi-year plan or even uh kind of a cross-governmental plan, right? The city of Beaverton has a ton of special districts. We can't accomplish everything ourselves. Have you seen operating models with, with uh that have maybe subcommittees or something? I think about, you know, our conversation around the transportation, right? Moving from maybe um traffic commission to and bicycle advisory, it may be something bigger, a multimodal. But even that might not be big enough in my mind because the, the reality is Beaverton voters are also needing to be served by Beaverton School Districts. N T F, R and D, and T H P R D, and they probably have versions of these committees too. And are, it, have you ever seen an operating model where different government agencies cooperate via the boards and commissions?
Would you like to think that they cooperate on occasion? Yes. Uh, well, so there's a couple of comments. I'm going to try to address, you know, your questions. You talked about um, you know, kind of short-term, long-term wo- um priorities and work plans. And I, I, I'll come back to your question around the nature of um kind of, you know, regional support for, or cross-jurisdictional uh committees. But I think that um with the, with the objective of both the short and longer-term horizons of, you know, work plan items that, you know, may be fully directed by council or maybe initiated through some of these bodies. I do think that the work plan process that was initiated earlier this year is a really good first step in that direction. Um, that provides a, a short-term annual work plan horizon. That's not to say that you wouldn't have longer-term goals as a part of those um work plans that you're, you know, chipping away progress. And so um with respect to that, I think that, that can get woven in over time um as the process matures. Um, in terms of um the, the jur- the cross-jurisdictional um bodies, if you will. Um, uh, yeah, I'm sure there are, there are plenty of, of regional bodies that could be um pointed to as examples of how to do that. What you were describing, you know, kind of in the transportation sphere or others. Um, maybe, you know, something that is, you know, shorter term in nature. Maybe it's more of a steering committee or an ad hoc committee or a task force or even a work group. Uh, you know, there, there are um not necessarily limits on how those are, are conceived. Uh, and I would, you know, certainly defer to the, the city attorney um for, for some additional guidance on this. But there should be some opportunity for imagining, you know, the, the public role um or representative role on some of these um bigger, bigger issue areas. Uh, I'm not coming to a specific example to point to, but I'm sure we could look into that and, and find something to share with you.
I'm going to be really quick here because it's, it's late. Uh, in general, I do support consolidation. I think it's a good idea. But, but with the sensitivities that my colleagues have brought up, I think that those are really good points. I'm a big fan of standardized definitions and consistent language, right? What is the difference between a board member and a commissioner? I don't know. I've been in, and I've been in this long, long before I was on the council. Uh, I think clear roles um uh are really important opportunities. Um, and then kind of what successful engagement looks like for the boards, right? Like it's, it's one of the biggest things we have is like, uh, you know, a lot of work happens, not a lot gets done though, right? And, and that's one of the issues is like people need to feel successful because they're doing an incredible amount of work, right? Um, I think, I know we made a meaningful step with this year with work plans. Um, I, I think there's an opportunity to align with calendars here uh for council priorities, right? Like, like we established them, we, we've made a couple modifications to them. I think staff needed some time to, to kind of evaluate those priorities and maybe uh create some guidance for the boards and commissions. And I think so that might be a meaningful next step. Um, I generally am in favor of the recommendations you've made. I, I think they're like the pauses and the, the kind of re- rethinking the climate action. Um, and I do think, and I don't have the answer here, I just think there's an opportunity for uh, for board and, boards and commissions to engage with council beyond the annual reports, but in an innovative way. But not just doing more of the same thing. Like I think there's, I, I don't know what the engagement model is and, and what. I just feel like it just feels very old school that we're doing right now. And I, there's got to be some sort of tool or technology or process or something that we can do to engage more regularly without making it this much intensive, right? Where we're, we're all doing our own thing and trying to, trying to balance life. And I don't think adding longer meetings is the answer, but there has to be something we can do. So thank you for this.
Um, I just want you to know, it's not lost on me that Lanny laughed when you said you don't know the difference between commissioner. Because I will tell you, six years ago, we probably had eight council meetings on naming conventions of the boarding commissions. Like I shit you not, I think we like beat it to death. And part of like what I have found frustrating about all of this is like, how do we not continue to repeat so much work that's already happened? But with a, with a council that doesn't know the history. And I get it because I've sat through eight meetings on what is a commissioner versus a board member. So perhaps we can find one of those old meetings and use Chat G P T to summarize it so the council can read a two-page document. And I'm not saying we don't want to change it. I'm just saying this work already has existed like intensely within the last five or six years. Counselor Kimmy, and by the way, I sat through it and I'm kind of iffy on what they are as well.
I, I actually looked up the history at Chat G P T today. Trying to find out why it all started, especially the recommendation that they wanted to combine, or recommendation was to combine DAB and human rights. I found out in um, uh, human rights were started in nineteen ninety-three after some human rights incident in Beaverton. The first chair was Betty Bodie. Um, uh, but one of the work that they did, which I thought was great, was um until about early two thousands, it wasn't illegal to discriminate against same-sex marriage, okay? Or LGBTQ in hiring practices of Beaverton. His human rights board came up and then changed ordinance or the law for the city of Beaverton to allow that to happen, not to discriminate. So their role is very distinctive and important, I think, in overall city. I got involved with that because at that time, uh, it was mayor, uh, at that time, wanted to reach out to the minority communities which were expanding in Beaverton. And they reached out to me or my community and said, you want to join our diversity advisory board? Because we recognize the needs and we want to hear your voice. So it was another, another access to the city that we never had before. That's how I was involved. So what DAB does is distinct, is very different than ATRAC. Their, their interests are different. It's more culturally based, how to get to know each other. And then we get to hear uh what they go through as a council, as a city, because that's different than ATRAC. So like, I think there's many similarities that they can work together, but combining them, it's um not wise in my sense because um how they are is different. I think we are more advanced as a city to have separate diversity board for the minority communities to get involved. A lot of cities don't have that. Um, so I'm not for that. And then for our Equity Office, one thing I learned was a current Equity Officer is more focused on internal equity work rather than outside. Maybe I could be wrong, but it's the, uh, I don't know how they're going to empower the DAB in the future. What's the idea is, but I'd like to have that more of an access for us to listen to outside voices that, that we don't get to hear. Um, I'm for term limits. Um, I kind of came out after serving seven years because I got too tired of it. But because my term was three years, so it wasn't like a year. My, when I signed, that was three-year term. Then I said, okay, I'll sign one more, then it's another three years. I think it was going to be one year after that. But so there's could be an idea that we can make people more engaged, but not that tired at the same time. Um, I don't know how much the financial impact and then staff time that gets involved. Maybe, maybe you can adjust frequency of the board's meeting so that it's not monthly, where it could be like every other month or every three months. Um, that would be an ideal situation. And when I was on the board, uh, I loved city counselors come into the meeting and listen. Uh, uh, but I, I also saw some city couns- or some counselors did not want to be there. So I don't think it's, um, we shouldn't be required to be there every single meeting. Um, it's an opportunity for us to listen, but right now it feels more like we need to report to the four, uh, the advisory boards. Um, uh, I love to do it, but uh I love to be there, listen to this discussion, what's going on. And then because our Jenny, city manager, is doing the work plan, she knows what's going to be on our agenda coming along. Maybe, uh, and then I'd love to hear what the boards would, board input is to us, but I never get them. Uh, so somehow we can summarize what they're saying to what's coming up on the agenda that I can listen and, and then read about it before I, I come to the dais to make a decision on. So that'll be my input. And my question to Nancy is like, uh, you recommended climate action and uh DAB and ATRAC. Uh, what, just wondering why that three and why not others? That, that, that was the question I had.
Yeah, no, thank you for your question. Um, you know, our, our assignment wasn't to um look at consolidation per se. What we were understanding and hearing in the interviews and the focus groups and then looking at sort of the um the changes in either um current work or anticipated work. In the case of uh ATRAC and DAB, the work that's occurring through um the formation of the strategic framework for equity and the Equity Office really was um an interest and a driver for evaluating how those pieces might fit together. Uh, and again, to just to reiterate, not to be prescriptive in any kind of recommendation that it should be a combined body, but really to just look at the work that's being accomplished and, uh, and honoring the work that's being done. But thinking about how it, it together, um, those objectives can support um the, the work of the city in the area of, of equity and um, and diversity. So, so the work that was happening through the, the Office of Equity was one of the drivers for looking at that and the, the recommendation. office of equity was one of the drivers for looking at that and the, the recommendation to kind of pause and reimagine what might be, um, best for the organization looking forward. And again, not to be presumptuous in what that framework or that structure might look like. With respect to the climate action task force, uh, it was after hearing and talking about kind of the recognition of the point in time where you are with your climate action plan and working, beginning the work on that 2.0. Um, and so finding an, an opportunity to utilize those, um, those community members that have been actively and committed to that work in a way that informs what kind of advisory body or future work might be, uh, relevant and helpful. So again, it's, it wasn't an assignment of looking to consolidate. It was more about making sure that the, the work program and the roles and, um, contributions of the board members were, you know, clear and, and impactful, which is what we had heard from so many members was we just want to have a, you know, an impact, which is why they're involved, which is why it's such a, you know, powerful resource, uh, for the community. So I hope that answers your question.
Thank you. Uh, just follow-up, not follow-up. Um, so I do agree with your recommendation with, um, uh, climate action task force. But we should think about combining the DAB and HREC. So that's all I have to say.
Counselor Teeter.
Thanks for staying with us so late, Nancy. I, I can support these recommendations. I think it's a good first step, good source of direction for us. I think it's definitely really important. I think this is important. Uh, committees report to staff and, and through the administration and not to us as city council. I think just this change in formal government, boards and commissions will tie in better with the city work planning if the people who implement the city work plan can, can help manage that work. We do have the housing technical advisory group, which is not in this report. But they report to staff and I, that example is, is already here. Um, so I would love to see more of that. And that would mean, I know some of our boards and commissioners wouldn't like it, but it would mean eliminating the council liaison role. Which I, no, Counselor Tivenon was talking about it too. It is a, a big time spent that we, that we spend there. And we're on other regional boards and commissions and, and next Wednesday I would have the option to go to library advisory board as the liaison, but I'll be presenting to another statewide group, um, that time instead. And I think our, our time is better spent in these regional boards and commissions that we can't serve or nobody else can serve other than us. Um, so I, I think it should run through staff and report to staff. Another piece that I really like, I think this is the final thing I'll say, is I would like to lean more into consolidation with, with our boards and commissions. An effort to reduce staff time and the budget impact from the staff time on, on the amount of time we spend preparing for different boards and commissions. I would love us to look at merging traffic commission and bicycle advisory committee into some more general, uh, transportation committee. HREC and DAB, I could see the benefit of that if we're able to, to make sure that we're not losing some of the value give that those, that those provide. Um, and then maybe even like committee on aging with the library advisory board. Those are both staffed by library staff members. Um, I don't know what that would look like regards to the services that they provide and that they support, but I think it's something we should look at too. So I'm, I'm trying to reduce the workload on staff and the budget impact. And that might mean boards shift their, their focus areas a little bit to cover some of the, cover some of the gaps. But I appreciate this work. This is a good first step.
Sometimes I have to remind myself, Counselor Teeter, that you have a master's in public administration. So I don't know often if you show up as a city counselor or a, a, a previous staffer. So I, I appreciate your comments. You bring a different perspective to us. I do want to just make a couple of comments for your guys' consideration because, um, I'm less involved with boards and commissions versus, um, picking them. Because like Counselor Teeter said, my time is spent largely in other, other areas. One of the things, as I have served on every, almost every single board as a counselor, I came up from vision advisory board. I think that what you guys are feeling, um, potentially is the loss of connection to people. And one of the things I just, I want to point out that's vastly different now is we do so few community events compared to what we used to do. And so we used to have like four events during the summer out here where there was concerts. We had picnics in every single park. We had, you know, the tree lighting was also in the library, also hot chocolate, also. And so the ability that elected officials were actually out in the community was so much greater. And so maybe as we're thinking through this, we need to really think about events and what that means because while, yes, you're getting a lot of contact with boarding commission members, 30 or 40% of them don't live in the city. Like there are eight or nine hand-selected people that you're getting feedback from. You're not really hearing from what the majority of our community versus if you go, we used to do hot dogs in the park and it was crazy to me how many people would show up for a free hot dog. And I know that we do trucks and it's all expensive now, but like maybe we need to rethink about our events. Because what I'm hearing from you guys is the fear of losing connection to our community, which is very real. But this isn't the only way for us to get it. And I think, you know, handing out 2,000 hot dogs is way cheaper than bringing five food trucks. And so if our, we need to think about it holistically because I hear you. And if this is one of your few connections to the community, I would, I would death grip it too. So I, I'm, I'm hearing that with you. I'm just saying that we need to think about some other things. I also know that my time on VAC was very purpose-driven. It was very exciting. We got to come and, and I knew what I was doing. When I chaired other boards that were less focused, we heard similar complaints of not, not feeling like they're connected. I too agree that HREC and DAB have different purposes. However, in the last four years, they have really gone the same stream. And so if we, I believe both serve a very important role. But there are also times when they intersect. I was thinking about what I've been most proud of, of, of DAB and HREC beyond the night market. Cause of course that's an incredible event. When we ran the sanctuary city resolution in, in 2016, um, it was a multi-board effort between HREC and DAB. And the amount of time I spent in the community, making sure that people's voices were heard in that resolution. And really the two groups working together. Um, Indigenous Peoples' Day, when they compelled the city to stop celebrating Columbus Day, this was a multi-board effort between HREC and DAB. Um, the Black and Brown Mice Matter Resolution was another collab across the two, two boards. So I think there are, they definitely represent things. And if I was to be critical of, um, what has come out of HREC and not the people, but it, it, they've, they've lost focus on some of these other groups, the queer group, you know, people with disabilities, some of the things that Counselor Hassan has mentioned. And those voices are incredibly missing to us right now when they are focused on area that the DAB is focused on. So I agree that having two makes a lot of sense. But we have to really think about, there are times when there's collaboration necessary. And how do we make sure they're focused on what we are actually doing? I also hear you, you guys, it's so funny because we, I, I track board attendance, just so you know. Um, for no other reason than often we come to the dais and say, you, you death grip and want to go to those meetings, but it's not actually turning into you guys going to the meeting. So just remember that's actually a public record. So you're not going by and large. And so the expect, but the board is expecting you to be there. So let's think about what that means. And maybe, and I just, I don't want to have like them come every week and filibuster time here. Our time is so valuable. We have a hard enough time getting things agendaized. But maybe we have two meetings a year where it is just boarding commissions. Like it is them and it's focused and we, we have an idea of what they're doing. So those are my thoughts. These are, I see this mostly as your guys' participation. And so I'm happy to kind of take your lead, but I just, as an outside observer, what you guys are talking the most about is also a reflection of some of the other budget issues we have with reduction of events and stuff like that. And so my hope is going into council goals that we start thinking about some of this stuff because it is important that we hear from our community. It is important that we're engaging with people outside of this building. And so how do we get that connection? The last thing that I will say, because almost every single one of you had a, a version of this, was the annual report, kind of the work plan. And the one thing that we're missing from this city is a strategic plan. We have council goals, but we do not have a strategic plan. We don't know who, where we're going as a city by and large. I mean, the goals are, are lofty. Financial recovery, community organization and wellbeing, natural resources. I don't even know what that means. Diversity, equity and belonging. I would venture to say, no matter what staff is doing over the next 300 days, they could point to one of those four things. And so we need to think about what direction is our city going? What is our North Star? And then that way the boards and commissions could go there. So just thinking about that heading into, um, you know, it's time for Beaverton to grow up. And a strategic plan that we have a strong hand in might be the way to kind of solve some of these issues as well. You got a lot of feedback tonight. You'll probably have to go watch this meeting multiple times to come back with us. But, um, I'm interested, city manager, and what is the next step?
Mayor, can I add one thing? I think one of the things that I heard when I was connecting with people was how the communication around this work was landing. So if we can be really thoughtful for how that's, I, I know how hard you all work, but just really, you know, with care and kindness, um, you know, folks are volunteering so much of their time. And so in the, in the convenings and all of the different things, I just, I had, I'd heard a lot of different versions of how folks were feeling. So just being thoughtful of that. I know you are, but if I could just ask one more time, because that's been something that I've heard from some folks.
You ever met Lanny? She's like a walking hug machine. It's probably other staff, not her. All right, city manager, what's our next steps coming out of this meeting for this topic?
I think where I need clarification, because I clearly heard, um, you know, council was getting around the concept of developing more robust rules. So there was lots of information around that. I think, of course, the code update would would come with that volunteer software, which we said was underway. The real area that I think we need clarification is whether you're willing to do a pause for both the, um, climate action and the, the HREC and DAB to allow us to develop a framework in the next three to six months to bring to you because we have, um, appointments that we need to make.
I heard that there's enough support for that. And just as a reminder, like I held off uh, interviewing and recruitment to figure out where you guys were. We would have come out of that and done whatever we want. Um, but I do want us, we're okay with a pause, but I want us to have a communication message to those that applied that we're taking a rolling application and we're going to be relooking in likely six months. That way you guys have some time, uh, to come back to a plan. So that would land you, I would say, I mean, I want to be honest, like that's May for you is six months from now. And I don't think you can deliver that because it's budget time. So what, what do you actually need?
So I would, um, if you take a look at kind of the next steps, um, that is laid out, you have a little bit of a roadmap there. We would come back to you with our appointments in the winter, which is in January. We have a boarding commission retreat. So we have an opportunity to, in addition to what the mayor was suggesting about, um, letting folks know what's happened here, that we would be re-engaging the boards and commissions about next steps and what this looks like. In the spring, we could bring the council governance subcommittee together to help, um, shape a work plan around some of the governance. Because this is going to be a huge body of work, very similar to the work that has happened with the council rules that will come before you this spring. Uh, I would probably recommend that by summer, we would be able to give you some type of strategic framework around the, um, the HREC, DAB conversation and what that could look like. So the mayor's correct, about six months. So after the budget is completed and before you go on your summer break, we could get a framework. The goal would be to have something in your lap so you can make some decisions in anticipation of the next round of recruitments for the board of commissions. Because I don't think this is something that you want to hang out there too long. Same thing would be with, um, climate action task force. We would try to get a recommendation around what that pause would look like and how we would, um, do B cap 2.0 and use the existing folks that are on there maybe to inform the composition and the structure.
Okay. Awesome. That sounds great. Uh, thank you, Nancy, for joining us, uh, this evening. All right. I spilled water all over myself. So with that, uh, is there any council new business? No? All right. We're done.